This is June 19th, 2019. Meeting of the Oyster River Cooperative School Board will come to order. The June 19th is Juneteenth, a celebration in the African-American community. Essentially, an Independence Day for the African-American community when black residents of Galveston learned of the Union victory in the Civil War. So this is their Independence Day, so we honor that. Our first action is the approval of the agenda, and there's a few changes that I would like to say, recommend. We have Carrie Vaych here, and I'd like to honor her the first thing, if that's all right, to put her right up front. She sat through so many long meetings of the school board. We don't want to prolong that any longer. And Ron Lamar is here to present on the safety issues of the proposed new middle school. And I would like to move that after public comment. Is that agreeable? Michael, you wanted to introduce the letter to the legislature, and what if we could put that as a discussion item?
Sure.
Okay. And Jim, in his superintendent's report, has a request for approval for a half-tech integrator for the high school. So with those changes, can I have a motion to approve the agenda?
I motion to approve the agenda as amended.
Moved by Denise is her second. Second by Brian. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Seven in favor, the amended agenda is approved. So Carrie, we want to recognize you. Why don't you come up front? Yeah, come on up, come on up. Just on behalf of the board to thank you for your service to the community, to Massway. I remember, like, your term kind of coincides with, you know, when Al and I came on, and I remember that as a very unsettled time, and how you've steadied the ship. And I think over the course of your seven years, just have an extraordinary record of achievement. You think of all the things that have happened in terms of the physical structure of this school, in terms of math curriculum, in terms of connecting the two schools so they're not operating as independently as they did at one time. Getting rid of Lake Nasa, I mean, it just goes on and on and on. And then culminating, of course, in the award, the national award for Massway. So for all those achievements, we want to thank you for your steady leadership. We want to thank you. And just attending the luncheon today was just so moving. And, you know, for those of you that weren't there, the teachers would write out comments, and they just read them randomly, not necessarily the person who wrote the comments. So they just kind of handed out the comments. And the theme that really came through was just how attentive you were to the well-being of your staff. You know, people talking about, I remember one where you talked to a teacher, says, "You don't have to stay till six or thirty or seven to be a good teacher. You can be a good teacher and go home and have a family life." And that sense, sense of the well-being of your staff and the deep affection that they showed to you today. And I hope that we can add our deep affection to that list. So thank you so much for all you've done. And we do have something for you.
Oh, thank you. Well, I just really want to say thank you to all of you because, I have to say, in the past week, we were able to have our kindergarten orientation for the new teachers, new students, excuse me, and parents coming in. And I have to say, it was very, very easy to speak in praises of Oyster River. I spoke to the new parents about, you know, you all and how you're so supportive of the teachers' administration and everyone there, and what a wonderful and how fortunate they are to be in Oyster River. And I really do mean that. And I really appreciate all that you do for the schools and for the children and the teachers. And I know Massway is on a great path with Misty Low leading the helm. And I know that everyone will rally together and continue doing a great job. So thank you all very much.
And we have this tiny thing. I want to be a friend and help Carrie.
Oh, that is gorgeous. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hello. I'm Patty Anderson from Durham. And before I left, you all asked me to come back and share with you guys what I'm doing after high school, after I decided. So I'm planning on going to UMaine Orano, and I'll be double majoring in secondary education and French with a minor in Spanish.
Congratulations.
Good evening. My name is Cheryl Berman, and I am a foreign language teacher in SAU 50. And I have met with Anita a few times with the parent interest in an elementary world language program. I've been teaching in SAU 50 for 25 years. I started in 1993 in Newcastle, and I've been asked to just give you a little briefing as to how the program runs in terms of times and et cetera. So my students, I meet with the students twice a week for 40 minutes each, and the classes are always in the afternoon. So the classroom teachers have their core in the morning, and then in the afternoon there's either world language, art, music, phys ed, and health. The classes run, our school day runs from 8:05 to 3:00 p.m. And some of the questions that I had been, that there was some concern was, did we have to make an extension to the day at the point of adding world language? And the answer to that is no. Our sixth graders go on to Portsmouth Middle School, which is 6, 7, 8. So the curriculum that I follow for the sixth grade gets them prepared for seventh grade Spanish. We only offer Spanish. In Newcastle, they offer French and Spanish, K-1 and 2. I think it's the same in Rye as well. Half a year of one and half a year the other, and at the end of third grade, the students need to choose with their families whether they want to stick with Spanish or French. The challenging part, I think, depending on how you folks decide to proceed, would be, I would recommend starting from fourth grade, maybe adding one language, picking one language in fourth grade, and then working back down that way so that you can scaffold and build down to kindergarten if that is the ultimate goal. The other thing would be to look ahead to the high school and look at which world languages have been around the most, which have the most numbers, which have been the most successful in terms of longevity. I know that some Mandarin programs have come and gone, depending on the money that comes in from Confucius. I know that Latin has come and gone, and I know that French programs have been coming and going as well. Newmarket has lost their French program just a few years ago. So that leaves Spanish and possibly German, which is another one that seems to be coming I see the students twice a week for 40 minutes. Other programs have 30 minutes twice a week, and some have 20 minutes three times a week. And I know that classroom teachers are stretched for their time. We have a 20-minute lunch recess and 20 minutes for lunch. And then in the afternoon, there's like a 10-minute break, but we do finish at 3 o'clock. I'm a very strong advocate of world language in terms of really thinking more globally. So I don't know if you have any questions or if there's something that I haven't addressed that you might be interested in.
Thank you very much.
Okay.
No? Thank you. So Ron?
Hi, everyone.
Hi.
Thanks for having me here again. So what I wanted to share is basically some information on how we approach safety. I mean, it's on everybody's mind. It's something that obviously has been all over the news. I won't touch that again. And so one thing that we do is, and I got a little thing down here in the bottom, you know, one thing that we've learned from all of the experts that we have worked with is if you see it, you report it, and it can be stopped. Too many times you hear on the news about all these events that took place. What you don't hear on the news is all these events that were actually thwarted. I don't know if that's the right word. But they were stopped before they became an event. So with that, we, you can see here in this photo, one of these buildings is a school and one is a child detention center. And so the idea that we're charged with here at Oyster River is to create a building that's inspiring, welcoming, healthy, and full of wellness. And so you can see that neither of these two facilities do that. Anybody want to take a guess as to which is which?
Well, my left, anyway, is the school.
Everybody agree with that? Okay. So that is correct, and the one on the right is the detention center. But you can see that they both have the same level of welcoming, if you will. So the other thing that we pay a lot of attention to is the real data. And this isn't what we see on Twitter or CNN or, you know, Fox News or MSNBC or any of those things. This is put out by the National School Safety Statistics. This is also put out by Safe Havens International. So just to walk you through this very quickly. Fatalities on school grounds, 40% is traffic-related, so it's cars and it's buses. Non-active shooters, which means somebody doesn't come to a school to do harm to a lot of people, they come targeting one person. And it's usually a vendetta. And whether, and a lot of that is also the adults, more so than the kids. And then 10% is suicides. And that is, again, not just children or students, but also anybody related with the school. And then 8% is unknown. So 8% of the fatalities that happen at schools, they never figure out exactly what happened. And then 5% is the active shooters that you've all heard about. 2% is severe winds, and when we talk about severe winds, it's basically tornadoes. And then accidents. So again, it's something that they know exactly what happened, but it was a pure accident that wasn't related to transportation, because most transportation accidents, obviously, are transportation. So with that, we always work with clients to say, let's take a look at what all of that means. We also spend a lot of time paying attention to SEPTED, which is the Crime Prevention Through Environmental Design. This has been up for 20 years, and they've continuously gone through ways to prevent crime. Crime is everything from bullying to the worst-case scenario. Safe Havens International is a company that investigates all of these things. So they go into the forensics, and they find the root cause of what took place. They don't just look at what took place. They look at the root cause of what caused it, how it happened, how it could have been deterred, and what happened after the fact. And then National Crime and Prevention Council, again, is always setting out best practices for how do you prevent crime on campus. Everything from bullying to theft to the worst case. So the SEPTED guidelines are very simple. They talk about natural surveillance. It has been proven that if you can see and you can be seen, it changes the equation. It's when you have buildings, like we just showed at the beginning, where you could literally sneak up to a building because there's no windows, so nobody even knows you're out there. You can hide behind parked cars. You can do a lot of these things. You can hide behind bushes. So one of the things is natural surveillance. The other one is natural access control. We have the ability in our new building to define the campus. We can define how visitors arrive, how they walk, where they drive, where the signage is, where the landscaping is placed, how tall the landscape is, how tall it is and where it's located so people can't hide behind it, the direction of traffic flow, the location of parked cars and such. And we can create one entrance for different things. The SEPTED guidelines are also territorial reinforcement. In other words, you want people to know that as they approach your site, it's a school. And it says school, and it's all about school. So you define your sphere of influence, if you will. You separate public and private. Obviously, you want to keep the kids safe or the teachers safe and the staff safe. You want there to be a separation between the public world and your school. And then you want to provide the perception of control. When people walk by, they look at your site and they understand there's a whole certain level of control going on on that site. The other most important thing has nothing to do with design, but it has to do with maintenance, providing things that are safe and a clean image. If somebody walks up and they see that nobody cares about the grounds, the fencing, the glass, the doors, you know, they're going to know if you don't care about your facilities and you don't care about what is taking place. Well-maintained campus, it gives that projection, that message of order, and it tells everybody that you're prepared. Any questions about any of that? I know I went through it pretty quickly, but I just, I wanted to let you know that we don't just make this stuff up. So at your existing site, this is the existing photograph here, this is the existing middle school, and this is the ball field in back. And we are talking about a zone of influence that is everything from the roads around to the site itself, all the way back to the hill. So that's our zone of influence, and that's where we think whatever we design, we can make sure that we take care of that. The areas of the current concerns in the back of the building, you are mixing parked cars, buses, and the playground. Not a good thing according to our traffic engineers. The entrance in and out of there with the buses onto Co-Drive is also problematic, given the location of the generator and the fields and the trees and the sightlines taking a right and left uphill. The intersection between Garrison and Dennison, the queuing that takes place on Dennison, and then the intersection, or I should say, the corner of Co-Drive and Dennison. So those are very specific areas of concern that we looked at when we first started. And remember, 40% is vehicle-related. This is an example of students walking through buses along, and then parked cars, and then that's where they play. You've got drop-off taking place with buses driving by. These are actual photographs that our traffic engineers took of the site when we were taking a look at it. We've got the queuing of cars, obviously. Local authorities were concerned that, obviously, if they ever needed to get an emergency vehicle through at any given time, that's a problem. And then it's not just Dennison. This is the corner of Co. And so, you know, you can see how it really starts to back up and create bad situations. So the National Crime Prevention Bureau, their number-one method, or I should say, their best practice, is that we don't do this as a bunch of architects that come in and say, "Let me tell you how to design a safe school." We engage local authorities because they know your locality better than we do. We define the elements of local safety. So when they talk about how their streets work and how the progress works. And then together, we facilitate a development of a plan. So we're going to come up with a safety plan for that entire zone of influence. Again, if there's any questions, you can just ask at any time. So we are meeting, actually, on Friday will be our third meeting with the local authorities, and that includes the police chief, fire chief, town manager, the school administration themselves. And a couple of things have already been put on the table in some previous meetings, and now we're going to discuss ways to actually take care of this. One is to address the one-way on Dennison, the one-way on Garrison. Is there a better flow that we can deal with on those two streets? And the corner and the hill coming up Co-Drive and how that connects, if you will, to Dennison? And then the apartments down Co-Drive? So those have already been identified, and those are going to be addressed from our team. I'm going to continuously call it our team, but these are the local authorities, along with the designers, the engineers, and the school administration. The other thing you'll see in the plan that we tried to do right off the bat was separate your parent drop-off, your parking, and your buses. And what that does is it breaks it into two pieces to really allow the buses to do their thing, the parking to do its thing, and the drop-off to do its thing. What you don't see in here is bike traffic. And what we're going to propose, you know, as part of our meeting on Friday, is what's the best route for the children to take if they're riding their bikes to school?
That's a good question.
Yes?
So when you look at the car drop-off and then, would it be easier to have another entrance off of Dennison right into the parking? Because that other area will get backed up, you know?
Yeah.
I'm just wondering if, you know, right there.
So that road is actually about 10 or 12 feet above the lawn in front of the school. So it, you know, one of the things I don't have here is a three-dimensional model of the site, but what you're looking at is a two-dimensional version of it. What you don't see is the grading. So after our meeting on Friday and as we start to develop things like you're talking about, we need to start developing this in 3D so that people really see that, you know, the nice thing about that is Dennison is higher than the field. So if we had a sloped lawn, you know, there's actually a barrier now between the road in the play area. We will definitely be addressing things like that.
So I'm looking, so the road that just shows a little piece of that, that's probably Baghdad Road.
Here?
Upper left, right? And then Dennison comes off of there.
Right. Yep, this is Baghdad.
And so then you're having cars come down Dennison, and then you've got this flow into a parking lot. And you're talking about making Dennison two-way, not one?
Well, that's currently being discussed by the local police, fire, and town manager.
Right. So I don't understand how that solves the issue of the backup that currently is occurring. If anything, I see it becoming worse because as cars come off of Dennison, and from your circle, it almost looks like they're going to circle. And how is anybody going to be moving if north is towards the top? They can't get through that line of cars, so I guess I don't understand the flow here of what you're looking at.
Okay. So when we do come up with the flow, we will point that out to everybody in terms of how it works. What we're trying to do is make it better. I don't think there's a solution if you have 400 or 500 cars show up at the same time unless you have someone out there directing traffic to allow people to come in and out. You know, this isn't to say that we're going to design something and it's just going to work without any human intervention. I do think that one thing that this does is it gets a lot of those cars off of Dennison. It's not the so-called solution, because we're still working this out with the local authorities. But what you won't have is all those cars heading in the same direction. And as people come out, they'll be able to take a right or a left in terms of when they're queuing in. So once we figure all this out with the traffic engineers, we'll be able to walk.
Let me take a shot at it, Ron.
Yeah.
So if Garrison's two ways and Dennison's two ways up to the entrance for the parent, it's possible to address the Baghdad problem by making Dennison from the parent driveway to Baghdad one way, the opposite direction, which will force the parents up Garrison to Dennison and to the parent drop-off. That's the discussion we're having on Friday. That will take all of the pressure off of Baghdad. And then if you look at the queuing at that point, you're queuing up Garrison, up Dennison, and down into that parent drop-off, and that takes those cars off the Madbury Road as well because they're queuing in a very forced direction.
So I appreciate that. I think the reality is that you have everybody going in one direction at a particular time of day, and you don't have people wanting to go cross-traffic. You have, the mission is the same.
Right.
And now we have this big loop, which is you're coming off of wherever, and you're going off Dennison, and you feed into Garrison.
Right.
If we're going to complicate that by having people trying to buck-traffic, I think we're actually going to make the flow even worse.
I guess I'm...
I can't see anybody, if north is towards the top of our diagram, I can't see anybody is going to choose to go north on Dennison after that queue, after the parking, knowing where people tend to go. And even that shorter, there's going to be a shorter segment on Dennison, which is going to mean that it's still going to be backed up Baghdad-Madbury. And so we're, I think we're actually complicating...
So if you queue it up now, Ken, though, and you look at what's happening right now and off of Baghdad, so you're getting backed up in your direction, you're getting backed up in the Madbury Road direction. So if you can take the traffic completely off of Baghdad, and you make Garrison two ways and Dennison two ways to the point of the parent road, then everything, the parent road being two ways, everybody's going to come in off of Garrison, go up Dennison, go into the parent loop, come back out and go down Dennison, and go back out Garrison, unless there's a, they have a reason to go out Dennison one way at the top.
I don't think that loop is big enough to accomplish what you would hopefully want to accomplish. And so what's going to happen is the spurs coming in are going to be a morass, and it's...
That Garrison Road and Dennison combined would be far bigger, and the parent drop-off is far bigger than Dennison.
But you're having people going in opposite directions, and you can have kids, but you're asking everybody to bottleneck into your loop for a pickup. And right now, the way it works on the street is that cars queue up incredibly. Kids don't stand at the front door and get in the car when their parents appear at the front door.
They go down...
The kids walk down the sidewalk, and they meet their parents further up. Their kids sit, stand on the quarter, they meet them further up. And if we're demanding everybody to move into that circle, it's not going to accommodate that.
Hmm.
The number is much, so the way we have it now, there is, it enhances the flow because the kids aren't waiting for the train to get right to the station. They meet the train, and that propels that flow, and then people peel out of the inside lane parallel to the school because it has that extra lane, and they are able to get outside, and they could flow, and that brings in the traffic that's coming from Madbury or Baghdad. And I might be all wrong, but I just doesn't...
No, I don't think there's a right or wrong.
Just from my observing the reality, I don't see this as solving that.
So this is a proposal that will be analyzed by traffic engineers as well as fire and safety in town. And they tell you the initial reaction from the police and fire is they liked turning these roads into two-way because it provided them access to the school much easier than what currently is happening. So fire and safety responded to this in a positive way, but we haven't had the engineers come in and say, "This is the idea." You know, you're, as you know, and Ron now knows, you're limited by the roads that exist, and whether they should be two-way or one-way. The problem with one-way roads is they do choke traffic. Two-way, you can move traffic. So, you know, I would wait and see what the traffic engineers say. Maybe there's a better idea that we haven't thought of, Ken. You know, you could be right, but we need to see what the traffic engineers come up with.
And I said, I don't know if I'm offering my perspective from walking through that area very, very frequently and seeing exactly what happens.
Well, nobody knows that spot better than you.
Yeah. And I don't see many police or fire people at those times of the day there that are actually observing what's going on. I think they know the traffic backs up on Madbury, but I've never seen police, fire on Dennison or Garrison, so.
The fact that kids are getting in cars all along there, though, to me, speaks to the whole, you know, safety issue of you've got kids trying to get into cars all over the place, you know what I'm saying?
But what we have now, I totally, I'm amazed we've not had something awful happen from the way the setup is. And, you know, I've spoken so much about wanting to address it. I'm just not sure that that's the solution. That's all I'm saying.
So...
I agree. That is all.
Yeah, we'll definitely bring up your concerns on Friday, Ken, so that that, both chiefs know your thoughts.
So I mean, I would think that there'd be some ways to run scenarios. I mean, suppose you have... I mean, suppose you have, figure out how many cars you have, you know, what would, what would it look, I mean, can you run like, almost like a tr, not a, not physically run a trial run, but, you know, a virtual trial run to see what it looks like?
So first of all, Ken, this is exactly the conversation that needs to take place. Um, what we're showing here is not a solution. This was the idea of separation. Like, in other words, the first step is, is it possible to have busing on one area, parking and drop-off on another? So that's just, is it possible discussion? And that was the result of that discussion. The next discussion is exactly what you're talking about. Now, how do the cars come down? What are the traffic counts? Uh, where do the children walk? Where are the sidewalks? Where do they get in? Where do they get out? How do you move traffic? And so all of that, again, is taking place on Friday. We're not going to solve it on Friday, I can guarantee you that it won't be, because folks are going to ask similar questions to what you're asking. And the biggest thing that I look at is the what-if question, right? So what, so right now, we have this going on. You know, we took a look earlier on in the project of a loop around the building. Um, and I'll go to my next slide to talk about that for a second. The other thing we're trying to consider, just for what it's worth at this point in time, because if we had the solution, we'd be done, but we're not looking for a solution until the fall, is what this does is it sets up two play areas for the children. One in front of the building and one in back of the building, both of which are not near, uh, again, you know, not near the, the cars or the, or the buses or anything like that. So I think what this demonstrates, and what, Ken, you're getting to, is this is a very tight site with lots of parents drop off, and with ten or eleven buses that show up every day, whether they're queued and timed or not. And it's a middle school where we have recess, and we have a lot of outdoor activities, whether it's outdoor learning or outdoor play. So because it's a tight site, one of the things we need to do is ask questions like that. Uh, the meeting is at one o'clock on Friday, is that correct? Um, I think the more people who are there, the more people who talk about this, the better the solution is going to be. Um, and then it's a matter of how does the grading work? How do you get cars from point A to point B in a safe way? So, anyway, that's lots to think about. Um, but I think what we wanted to demonstrate tonight is that we're thinking about safety first, and how do we solve that, um, as we move forward.
Ron.
Yep.
In that picture, is the amount of parking along Dennison the same as it is today? Is that roughly?
We, we haven't really figured it out. What we have figured out is that, um, what you have right now is like pull-in parking. Um, and to complicate everything Ken just said, can you imagine if people are trying to back out? And so one of the things we were thinking about, and I think this goes in line with what the chiefs were thinking too, is that if it's two-way, you can get parallel parking on both sides of the road. Um, and so now you're not backing up into traffic. Um, now, that's not to say there won't be a proposal that says, what about angled parking? Or what about, you know, because the other thing in the back of everybody's mind is once we solve the safety, the movement of the buses, the movement of the, of the cars, then how many parking spaces can we get in and around the school? You know, we're still targeting as many as we can. So, um, we haven't pigeonholed ourselves into a certain number of parking, because we think the safety comes first. But as soon as we solve all of that, what's the best way to park? You know, is it parallel? Is it angled? Or is it straight-on?
Right, right. So I, I'm, I'm wondering if, if the, if the field could be slid towards the building a little bit, fill added in that parking area along Dennison, expanded, hopefully to reduce the need for as much parking.
Yeah.
Road space on the, on the northern end of the, of the site altogether.
Definitely something we will look at. Yep. And again, just, there is a big grade difference between the two. So maybe moving that field forward is going to solve more than one issue. So that's a good thought. Um, that's basically the outside. As we get to the building itself, just reflecting back into what we just talked about, in terms of one entrance into the building, it's a controlled entrance. So the idea is that even though you're going to see doors around the building, they are secured, and everybody comes in, uh, the front door. This allows just a easier flow, and by the way, it's more welcoming, because everybody comes through the front door, you get to say hello to everybody. Um, the other thing is the natural surveillance, and what you see here is in the light pink and the orange and the yellow, this is your library services, your food services, and this is all administration, counseling, nurse, uh, special ed, and the office for the library, for instance, um, the tech center for the library, for instance, the office, uh, for the kitchen or for facilities. Everybody's on the perimeter of the building, everybody has their eyes out, everybody's looking at what's going on. Um, and so we want to get as many eyes as we can around the perimeter on the first floor that allow you to see the entire site. What you see here with the little arrows is two sets of eyes welcoming people into the school, the counseling side as well as the administrative side. We also have emergency exits, so obviously the stairs, all four stairs will exit directly to the outside. There are exits to the back of the building, from both food service and the library, and then again, obviously, the, the main door. Um, there are secondary entrance exits, if you will, that are from the gym and from the music programs, given the size of the rooms. But what you see here is that there's lots of emergency exits in case of emergency. Another thing I'd like to consider is emergency entrance. There may be times, we just talked about wind events, right? I don't think we get a lot of tornadoes, but, you know, I think that being able to get the people into the building and sheltered in a quick manner is just as important as getting them out. Um, so we have to consider that as well. You may ask, how do you do that with doors that are both locked in one scenario, open in another scenario, and able to egress? And the answer is electronic, uh, locking systems. So the next thing is controlled entrance. What you see here are three layers of doors. And again, this is all part of the initial proposal, the initial concept. We need to work this out, um, with everybody in the school. But the thinking is the first two sets of doors, you have to get buzzed through, and it's also your energy lock for air. That third door allows you to come into another vestibule that enters either into administration on one side or counseling on the other. So if a parent comes to the school to see the counseling folks, or if they come to the school to see the administration, there's no need for them to even go into the lobby. They can go right into those spaces, and then they exit back out. Um, then you have a lobby here, and even that is secured in this location and in this location, so that the parents can come into the school when it's time, either at the beginning or the end of the day, to help the students bring in their musical instruments, to put their instruments down and so forth. But these two doors right here secure the whole rest of the school. The badging systems remain in place, and all of those checks and balances remain in place, but from a design perspective, uh, you're able to control the flow as much or as little as you want. And again, it's all dependent on, on how you want to do that as a school district.
That's a good question, because like, one of the things about this, what we had is some of the doors were closed, you know what I mean? They had, I mean, it's supposed to be secured, but like, somebody prompted open.
Right.
And all this new, like, technology, and I hate to hazard a grave, but a fair mechanism, I know you have cameras everywhere, but that there's a, that, that central place that you have a camera, that there's a thing that said the doors will actually.
So with the, and it's, it's actually very simple these days, and you can see the wiring conduit that comes down and attaches to that door there and that door there. I don't know what that is, that could easily be just a alarm system for intrusion alarm. But what these doors have, it's called an ajar alarm. So if you leave that, so if somebody comes into the building, the door, because of the weight of the door and the hinges on the door, takes fifteen seconds or however many seconds to close. If that door stays open for that, for longer than that period of time, you can have a local alarm goes off, so it's just the people in the area of the door that hear it. You can also have that local alarm go off and text messages be fired out to the principal, um, the assistant principal, to, um, the facilities director, to the SRO, if there's an SRO, I mean, that's, you know, those types, it's very simple these days, because you want the doors to be able to close. So there are automatic closers, um, and they will close. Um, same thing with handicap buttons. Folks ask me that all the time. So if you walk up to a door and you hit that button, it automatically opens. Well, that defeats the locking mechanism. Well, not if you first have to swipe a card. So when I walk up to that building, the handicap button is here, and there's a card swipe right next to it. So if I'm a handicapped, um, administrator, I can swipe the card, push the button, and come in. If I'm a visitor, I have to hit the doorbell. Then they push the button, and then they hit the button. So, you know, there are all these checks and balances to make sure that you're spending this money on securing the doors, that they're actually secured. I'll also tell people that we're still going to use an intrusion alarm system, because this is controlled access, it's not intrusion alarm. So you always want that, you know, middle of the night, um, to have the motion sensors.
Ron, um, just in thinking about what we've, um, dealt with with other schools, we have a big building project now, Maharamid, trying to correct, um, safety issues there, Massway went through that. And for, um, both of those schools, we did receive, um, grant money and of course, district money.
Mm-hmm.
So here, we're kind of pre-loading it, it's in your design. But is there grant money that couldn't be written, um, that we could apply for, rather than correcting a deficit, um, working, um, you know, with, with the department that we've worked with before to try to, to help get funding to make this a safer school?
So I'll take that, Ron, because I just talked to the commissioner, and the legislature's put no new money into secure entrances so far in this, in this proposed budget. And, um, there's plenty of schools who need it. So it hasn't risen to the priority level that it has for the last couple of years.
Okay. Um, so then, the other thing is, we knew we had a tight site, so we knew we had to go vertical. So one of the things that we talked about very early on was to get all the educational space on the upper floors. So what that means is, in the event of a lockdown, your stairs lock down. You can still get out on the first floor, you can still get out into the stair on the upper floor, but what you can't do is get from the stair onto the floor. And I'll show you a picture of that in a minute. So what that does is during a lockdown, all the upper floors are secured. Um, and they're secured by the stairs. So what that means is if someone was going to come into the building, they'd obviously have to get through those barriers that we talked about earlier, so they'd have to get through those doors. And we can make it as easy or as difficult to get through those doors as we choose. Um, we know that they can't get in to the stairs, um, or into the back. So once they're in the building, you see the upper floors, the doors swing out into the stair. So when those close in a lockdown and they're locked, you can't pull the door open. Does that make sense? So you can't get from the stair into the building. In case of an emergency, you can still go from, from the academic space into the stair, because that's, you can always get out. The other benefit of that is it gives you time, right? So one of the things is detain and deter. So you can imagine if somebody's breaking in the first floor, and you realize it, and you hit, um, the duress button, if you will, to lock down these doors, that person would have had to get into the first floor, across the first floor, and up a flight of stairs before they even get to these doors, which allows them the time, uh, to lock. And they lock automatically. Now, what that means is when you hit a button, the magnets let go, um, and they lock the door.
So what happens, though, say you have a classroom that's been, you know, transitioned from going to the second to the third floor, when something like that happens, then they're basically trapped in the stairwell as well.
No, so that goes into training. So one of the things you have to do is all your kids do fire drills, right? Um, when you have the facility like this, you want to get into, okay, how do we drill for this, and how do we drill for that? Um, how do we do this, and how do we do that? You know, these doors don't have, I just, we just talked a minute ago about time. Um, so you could easily have the staff be involved on the upper floors that have to do with these stairs. There are many different ways, uh, to take a look at it. I think from a design perspective, we want to give you the options, so that you can address how these doors are locked, and when these doors are locked, and by whom, whether it's automatic or, or, you know, the push of a button at the stair doors. Uh, so there's lots of different options for, for you to consider as we start talking about, uh, things like this. So when we then get to the upper floors, it's exactly the same thing. So if they went past the second floor up to the third floor, you have those safe, same scenarios taking place at the stairs. You go up to the fourth floor, it's the same scenarios, uh, taking place. Uh, the other thing that we talked about, I'm going to back up here for a second. So one thing you see are these little green circles, because folks always ask, okay, what happens if all the kids are at lunch, when something like this happens? So there are safe haven rooms, and we designed them, um, in a particular way, so that anybody who's in here, if something's taking place, they get to move into the band room, the chorus room, the performing arts room, if they're in the gym, uh, they move into the locker room areas. And so that is a way to get them out of sight, uh, and to move them. And so that's just another level of, um, I guess, safety, if you will, or another level of being able to move people. Same thing up in the classrooms, when we start to design the classrooms and we talk about the use of glass, which is my next slide, um, you can do the same thing on the upper levels. You know, when you see into or out of a room, are there angles of sightlines that you can't see inside the classroom? So lots of different things that we'll be talking about with the staff and the administrators as we go forward. I did want to talk about glass, because it's come up so many times on the project, I think it's important, and I, I always stand up here and I cite these articles and the research. So there's a group called Utopia, or Edge Utopia, rather, and it's the George Lucas Foundation. And I'm always looking for the most recent article, because things continue to change. So one is the autonomy of school bullying. So believe it or not, if you asked a kid in school today, and this is across the country, and in fact, it's in other countries as well, what's your number-one form of anxiety when you show up every day? It's bullying. So studies have proven that it's almost the same thing, it's forty-one point-something percent of the boys, forty-one point-something percent of the girls, bullying is their number-one thing when they get to school. It could be outside, it could be inside. Um, there's studies that I'm referencing talk about how glass, not glass from classroom to classroom, it's glass from the classroom to the common areas, um, reduces bullying by a great amount. And everybody's going to argue about what that amount is, and it's always different because of how much glass you have between the common areas, um, and the classrooms. What that does is it actually puts eyes, and this goes right back to the see and can be seen. It's proven to reduce bullying. Again, the amount is up for discussion. It changes the behavior and the work ethic. There's no question, every single facility that has done this has said, our children act differently, because they know there are eyes on them, because they look around, it's not just a camera. Anybody can look out that window, whether it's a student, an administrator, or a, a teacher, or a staff member, they just know they're constantly being watched. Um, spatial interconnectivity, uh, is another great thing from an educational point of view. Um, same thing, it encourages collaboration, and it celebrates student learning and work, because students are able to see what's going on in a fabrication lab, or what's going on in an art room, uh, what's going on in a language classroom. The amounts of glass is totally up to you. I just want to reference these studies, and you all can take it, uh, from there. Um, conversely, there have been two big arguments about the use of glass. One is it creates distraction. High Tech High is a K to, K to twelve charter school system in San Diego, who have done extensive studies on this. All their buildings are filled with glass. Um, and they obviously have a very good outcome. And so, and the reason I say that is because they're the number-one, uh, school district in the country when it comes to performance. And the thing is, is when we talk about distraction, they will talk about proper seating arrangements, how the students are engaged, and even blinds, like you have right here, right? I mean, if there's something really going on, and you have somebody doing some testing or something, and you want to pull the shade, and, you know, you put blinds on the windows, I will say that you can always put the blind up and have that transparency, and put the blind down and not have the transparency. If it's a wall, that's it. And so anyway, um, and then it can create lockdown views into classrooms. So again, you know, when we lock down, you know, how do we hide the vision? Well, one way to do it is obviously either move a blind or have those safe haven zones in the classroom where it doesn't matter, you can stand there at the glass and look, and you can't see the students, uh, because somehow they're, they're safe, um, in the room. So that's it, that's all I wanted to present tonight. Um, and if you have any more questions, you know, we can certainly go through it. This is still a, a concept design, and as we move forward and continue talking to everybody, it's going to become more and more refined.
Thank you, Ron.
All right, thanks. Thanks, everyone.
So we have the approval of the minutes. Could I have a motion to approve the June 5th, 2019 minute, regular meeting minutes? Brian? Brian is the second?
I'll go ahead and second, sorry. Just trying to get it out, but yes, I will second.
Are there changes to those minutes? Carrie, none? You okay? All those in favor, please raise your hand. Seven in favor, the minutes are approved. Announcements, comment, announcements, commendations, and comments from the district? We'll have some things later on. From the board? Brian?
I had the luxury of going to the, my son's step-up day the other day, last one, so I have no more kids in elementary school, they're all middle and high school. So it was our last, well, it'd be my last time in the Massway, but it's his last time going to school in the Massway. But obviously, great, I mean, thank you very much to the volunteers for putting on the breakfast, that was outstanding, Anita, I know you were part of that, so thank you very much. It really was a great, actually, we had to put out extra tables and chairs, because it was such a great turnout, and the kids loved it, absolutely loved it, so. And also, I'd like to second what Tom said, Carrie, I'm going to miss you greatly. You had the ability to work with both of my kids, and they'll both remember you forever, as I will, and I will always thank you for what you did. I know we got to work a lot in my only couple of years here on the board, but I will miss you, and I wish you the best of luck in whatever you do. Thank you.
I'd just like to note the passing of Peter Stoichkovich, who was a math teacher at the high school, my son had him, and it was Stoich, right? Wasn't that, he was Stoich, he was a real old-school math teacher, serious, discipline's demanding, so we note his passing.
I have two things. One, I just thought to, just to let the board know, with the Orchard Drive property, which the school board had kind of given an opportunity for a community group to kind of fundraise, and we received our first grant, money came through, we've had lots of donations come through too, so we're well in the way to having the money to bring the school board whole to take over the property. But a very exciting part with it too is, the property abuts the Oyster River, which is just maybe south of the faculty neighborhood, and just south of that property is UNH-owned land, and just south of that is Fish and Game-owned land, and south of that, Durham has a big holding in Doe Farm. And through work with both UNH and Fish and Game, we've gotten approval to locate trails, which will go with our hope, really, right from faculty neighborhood all the way to Doe Farm, and eventually further than that. There are other grants that we should be hearing from in the next few weeks, and the outreach is very favorable, so that project is going, and I thank the school board for giving the community that opportunity. And the other thing, I just raise it, and I wish I knew more about it, but I spoke to somebody on Monday, and then I was out of town, so I couldn't research it, but it's someone who's involved with education at UNH. And he mentioned to me that the State Department of Ed has put forward a proposal which kind of deals with our kind of ELOs, but without needing approval from the schools to certify that these ELOs are actually with the rigor that we spent a lot of time in policy and then brought it through to the board. And in some ways, it really undermines public education. I believe that we're having people in our schools being able to write up programs and not be approved by your local school for credit. The person from UNH I spoke to thought that was the case, and I was wondering if people knew more about that, and two, if we as a board should try to make a stand about that.
So the Superintendent's Association, the Principals' Association, and the New Hampshire NEA State Union have all been very adamant in their opposition to Learn Everywhere is the program you're talking about. And essentially, the Commissioner and the State Board have taken it upon themselves to choose to grant, grant credit as a state. We had lots and lots of input, the, it passed the State Board four to three last week, and now it's in, back to the legislature for rulemaking. It is, it is, it does take away the authority of local schools to grant credit by granting that authority to itself. And I testified against, against that particular component probably three times, I was in two four-hour meetings talking against it, but the commissioner was fixated on getting it through, and he took a lot of, I would say, in all honesty, he took a lot of my suggestions, that it was a far worse bill than, than it is now, but the fundamental issue that he would not move on is that these credits should be granted by local high schools. And so, right now, the only place it can die is with the legislature's rulemaking committee. And so, that's where it is.
So should, is there a pathway, and in my mind, the pathway then is really having one-to-one discussions with people on that legislative committee, and explaining what we did here in Oyster River, and having that kind of input. I mean, we write letters, but letters sit on desks. I'd be happy to be part of groups that try to approach people on that legislative.
I'll, I'll contact our executive director, Carl Lad, and ask him specifically who should we target, because all the professional organizations in the state have taken strong stands, and the amount of testimony against it is, is this deep. And unfortunately, we haven't been able to move the commissioner off of the dime in terms of who awards credits. You know, my, my particular position was that the state does not have the capacity to do the work that each high school does in this state, and that it'll just become vacuous in terms of its quality. Not because that's what the commissioner wants, I'm sure he wants something that's quality, but he simply doesn't have the staffing to, to do the work. One of the ways we did influence it, Ken, was to have, in his rulemaking, to have him have high school teachers who've built competency models be part of the process when somebody submits that they want to do it. But it's still not, still the fundamental issue is, New Hampshire's high schools should be issuing credit, not, not the state board.
And, and sorry to be political, but it's always interesting where local control is so advocated, except when it's against the interest of what the people are, are trying to shove to us, and it's very upsetting.
So you'll report back to us on that?
I will.
Okay. Other board comments? Assistant Superintendent?
Good evening. I'm here tonight, I just wanted to give you an update on progress with the World Language Committee that, that was formed. Just to give your, there's a memo in your packet along with a draft survey that the committee would like to use with, with families, which I'll talk about in just a minute. Just to refresh your memory, in January, the board authorized the creation of a World Language Committee to take a look at the idea of a elementary or K through five, really, because we don't have fifth grade world language at this point, to take a look at that. The charge you gave to us was very specific, so I'll just read it to you, just to remind you of that. To investigate current research related to the effective elementary world language programs, to identify the obstacles faced, including how world language would fit into the schedule, and to present best practice options with preliminary reports in May, with a final report in September 2019 for board consideration. I, just as a quick note, I was ready to do this report in May, but you guys have been very busy, so I haven't been able to get on your agenda, so just so you know, I wasn't ignoring the board charge, just you guys have been busy. And I would also note that in March, you also authorized us to take a couple more months to allow us to do a more thorough job, because I think, from what I have gleaned from interactions with the board, you're putting a lot of stock in the recommendations that are going to come from this, to consider what we do next with world language. So just to give you a quick idea of where we're at, we formed the committee, we have a really diverse group. Leslie Ayers, the world language teacher at the high school, who's currently, just started her sabbatical this afternoon, is on sabbatical this next year to assist us with world language. We have Candace French, a world language teacher at the middle school, is on the committee. Kate Zamar, a Massway teacher, is on the committee. We have three parent community members. We have Andrea Burkle, who's a Maharamit parent. We have Kristin Labres, a Maharamit parent, and Anita Matha, who's here tonight, is a Massway parent serving on the committee. Dave Goldsmith and Carrie Beish, the two elementary school principals, as well as Jay Rashad and myself. We started meeting in February, we've met roughly twice a month for the whole, for the year. Our last meeting was May 20th, and we decided that we are, we would take some time off in the summer, and our next meeting is scheduled for August 12th. What we've done so far is, we have created a shared drive that all the committee members have access to, and so we're all individually, as we find research and ideas, we're dropping in there for everybody to see and letting each other know that it's there. We've reviewed a variety of research on what makes for effective world language programs. We have created a draft of a survey that originally, we were thinking we were going to try to do this spring, but obviously, the delay and me getting before you to share this with you, I wanted to show the survey to you before we did it, so we would probably do it early in the fall. If you wouldn't mind, just take a moment to take a look at the survey that we have, it's a very short survey, it's this, this last part of this document that's in front of you. I mean, basically, keep in mind, this is going to be a Survey Monkey type of a survey, so it's, it's all very straightforward, yes or no questions, questions we want to explore. All of this, by the way, is geared towards looking at some of the logistical challenges that we will face. First, the first question is, would you support a world language program within the school day? Because obviously, that's been something that we have talked about, I know, particularly as we look at schedules and so forth. One of the things that's coming up is that the elementary school day in Oyster River is actually one of the shortest school days. We actually did an analysis of sixty or seventy elementary schools, and we're in the, our elementary schools have one of the shortest academic days around, so just to note that. So clearly, looking at how strongly people feel they want to see it in the school day plays a role in how we think about the program. Second question we're looking at is, would people be open to supporting potentially an after-school program that was school-sponsored, possibly something that we as a district provided transportation home for, or whatever? But is the idea of, would people find that to be an acceptable option versus trying to put it into the school day? The other thing we want to find out is, which language, the speaker we had earlier talked about, you know, the importance of making that choice about what language you offer. Typically, elementary school programs do tend to focus on a single language, and which one would that be, and if people had the choice, which would they like to see? One of the things I think that has been clear is, most of the most vocal advocates of world language in the district, from the parent community, have been coming from parents of kids that are taking Chinese, and trying to glean whether or not, is it Chinese that they want to see within the school day, or is it the study of language? And if so, what would the language most likely be? So we wanted to ask that question. And then obviously, we wanted to rank them. And then finally, the really big question we were kind of looking for people's input on is regarding, kind of philosophically, what kind of a program, if they like, would like to see happen. If you have a fluency-based program, you really need to be thinking about three times a week for twenty-five to thirty minutes, so kind of getting a sense of would people think that's a good idea. Exposure to diverse cultures, which is what a lot of programs do, that can take place as often as you choose to, because it's generally linked to regular, regular education classroom content. And then the third option is more of a, an introduction to language study, with the idea of possibly using it as a way for kids to ultimately make a decision about a future language study that they might start in middle school. So, and then giving people the opportunity to give us just general feedback. So really, what this was intended to do is to give us a sense of what our parent community would be interested in before we spend too much time crafting this, this program. I did want to give you a chance to give us any input on this, again, this is a draft survey, so, yes.
My only question is, who would this survey go out to? Would it only be current elementary school parents, or would you expand that survey to perhaps, you know, middle school parents who would be, have the benefit of saying, you know, if this had been available, this is what I would have preferred, you know? So who's the, who's the audience?
Yeah, our general thinking was the elementary-middle audience, but I mean, it's, we can broaden it as widely as people would like it to. I think, once your kid has already gone through the system and it's in the rearview mirror, I don't know how much concern people would have for it. So clearly, we wanted to be able to tap into the families that are most likely to benefit from whatever decision that we would make.
Yeah, I just think that it would probably be beneficial to include at least the middle school parents, because, you know, they would, they might, I don't know if they would have much preference in terms of what would you support now, but they might have comments related to, you know, I really would have liked this, or, or my child participated in the Chinese, and I really wish this would have happened this way, or, so I think it's probably worthwhile.
Yeah, that was our original thinking, was elementary and middle school families.
Yeah.
I appreciate all the work and all the meetings that your committee has done, and I hope you recognize that I, I'm a very strong advocate of having the kind of language development occur earlier and earlier. I look at the survey, and it just doesn't speak to me. There isn't context with the survey. So if we really want to get an informed kind of opinion, I think we need to put context. So like the first question, would you support a world language during the school day? As we on the board have wrestled, and I think fairly, Tom and Denise have talked about how much we already cram into that day, is there enough time?
Exactly.
Are we overscheduling? To me, that's a priority, but to ask that question in a vacuum, and not explain, have that context of the school day, because if you add something, it means something else is going to happen. I think your last question is incredibly valid, but I think you need to put in either links or context about what, what sort of studies are now showing about the value or lack of value of introducing education at an earlier age. The questions, one where you ask, which one would they choose, but then the next one you ask, are they ranking, they're really the same question. I would get rid of the one where you're asking to choose and assign kind of values to the ranking. But I just think that context, because if you, we need to look at it, these are, we have families that are incredibly involved, wanting foreign language, they have their reasons for it, they have their understanding, but we have so many families in our district who might not be paying attention to the issue, don't know what the issue means. And so without the preamble, to me, the study, it doesn't have the significance, if that makes sense?
Right, we have actually wrestled with that quite a bit, and the idea of, how much do you front-load information, because if you, there's a fine line between giving too much information, so it doesn't become an objective opinion, or if the information we're providing is leading to a conclusion. The other component is, if you truly want to create a survey that people are going to do, if you create a survey that requires people to, you know, do research, generally speaking, you're not going to get a significant return. So you're absolutely right, there is a line there to be drawn, and we certainly intend to have some kind of a cover letter that goes out, that kind of gives that sort of big picture of what we're doing.
So, but maybe, and I totally agree with what you're saying, that if you put out this, you know, big voluminous thing for people to read, we're not going to get a response. But I think it comes to even the communication we're, discussion we'll have. We could, you could do this survey with lots of live links, and you could have links that take people to sites to read about, and they're pro, I mean, they're not all, there are districts that are not doing this, there are districts that are, so you could have scattered opinion. So if people want to become, I think this is a great time for people to become more informed. And I stick with a basic survey like this, but at least give the people the opportunity that want to look at it in a greater depth and have a better comprehension.
Sure, I could definitely see us being able to, we have, we have dozens and dozens of articles that we could link. Again, I just, I don't want it to become voluminous and excessive, because you're really trying to just get a quick read, which is not to say that just because we get a certain response... certain response that that automatically becomes our recommendation. We just wanted to get a sense, because as I said, most of the people who have been advocating for world language have come from one group. We want to get a broader sense of what would other people potentially want. I'm sorry, go ahead.
See, I think, and this would be tricky to frame this question, but I think, would you support inclusion of world language in the elementary school if it meant this time would be taken from other subjects or recess? I mean, or, you know, that's kind of the issue.
Yes, it is.
And, and, you know, it's, say, if you frame, would you like X, you know? Yeah, you'd like X, who wouldn't like X? But if X means you have to have less of Y, that's kind of the trade-off. We don't know exactly what the trade-off would be, but there has, you know, I've talked about this a million times, I'm sorry to bore everybody, but you know, if you add something in, you have to take something out.
Yeah, we're dealing with time and space, you know, basically, so we have a limitation to that, yes.
And so it's like, if, you know, if you have to imagine, well, you'd have maybe less for social emotional learning, or you'd get rid of recess, or you'd have less time in reading and writing, you know, that's the kind of trade-off that you're asking about.
Sure.
Or you're asking for a longer school day, you know?
But, and I do think, you know, not necessarily a longer school day, but is there some way to extend the learning for those who are motivated to do so in a way that doesn't, I mean, as a public school educator, I want it to be something, if we're going to do something, I would like to see it be available to everybody. But as an interim step, could we offer something that could take place outside of the school day? But you're absolutely right, yes.
So I actually, great minds think alike, so I was going to say the exact same thing, because it's like, no, 99% of people say, hey, do you want something else? To be like, yeah, that's awesome. But I think you have to put in there, would you accept this at the loss of something else? It has to be, how you frame that, I don't know, but that has to be placed in there, because I think the realization has to come into people, there's a finite length of time, and you can't squeeze, even if you do add it, you are going to take away something else. So that needs to be put in there.
Yes, so I will, I will work to try to work on a cover letter. Again, I think it's really important to, if you want to ask people their opinion, you don't want to front-load it with so much information that it slants their opinion. That being said, there's also research that shows exposure to a language also enhances your learning in other areas, reading and writing and so forth.
But I was just going to ask a simple question.
So it's not, so it isn't as simple as a one-to-one trade-off, and so I...
I wasn't going to get the research, I'm just put a simple question. Would you still support it if it resulted in the loss of other programs?
But that's exactly why I raised the point that I did, is it's unique context. I mean, and I raised the point, you know, from past board discussions, what we've heard from Tom and Denise, and you're right, there are trade-offs, but, and this is such a, and I mean, we're trying to do surveys when things in town, and it's, and surveys are tricky, and I mean, that's a career that people have, is how to do surveys. And I get it, but I think if we want to get the information, we need to consider the things that Alan and Tom did, but we need people to understand the trade-off as well of what that meaning is.
Sure, I hear you, I absolutely hear you. So obviously, we've got some work to do on the survey, and I will take a look at that. Continuing on, other things that we've accomplished in the committee, we've done visits to a couple of schools. We've been to Rye, and we went to Keene. We have scheduled visits in the fall to multiple other schools, and actually, we've been talking about going to Newington to check out that school. Glastonbury, Connecticut, is one that's seen as like a really, a model of elementary world language instruction, so we want to visit there. We've had communication with a couple of schools in Massachusetts that have been sort of on the front lines of sort of expanding elementary world language programs, the Wayland Public Schools and the Brookline Public Schools, and certainly have learned from them. In fact, the survey draft that we had was actually tweaked from the Wayland Schools draft that they used three years ago. So all of that is in the works. Clearly, our intention is to be ready to give you a report in November that will give you some recommendations. When you asked for the report in May, I think the primary reason you wanted to hear from us was, number one, to kind of make sure we're making progress, but more importantly, to reconcile, we knew that there was a fifth grade world language instruction issue. We have all of these kids coming up from elementary, had Chinese throughout their elementary, and how are we going to be able to manage that? And so Jay, the New Hampshire Middle School Principal of the Year, will be telling you a little bit about that.
Yeah, thank you. Jay Rashad, the principal of the middle school. So I was providing a list from fourth grade students who are currently doing Chinese. There were 10 students who are in the district, I'm not actually sure whether they were from Mastway or Mohearmut. I always like to provide a personalized approach, so what I did is I actually reached out to all these families personally, via phone or email, to see what they would prefer. Of the 10 students, three of them, well, actually, let me back up a little bit to give you a little historical perspective, what we've done in the past with Chinese students. Couple of years ago, we did it after school, a couple of days a week, that was successful. People seemed to enjoy that. In the past two years, I've got a sense, and parents have asked us to do this during the academic day, and what we've done is do it during Bobcat time. So a small group, several students during their Bobcat time would go receive Chinese instruction either two or three times a week. We've learned from that process, particularly not starting at that at the beginning of the academic year, because those kids would miss out on some important transition stuff. So that's the, you know, kind of two options, during the day or after school. Of the 10 families, three of them would definitely like to do it during the school day, during Bobcat time, and start it maybe in October. Two would prefer after school. Two on the list would no longer like to participate, that was a surprise to me. And three of the families have not gotten back to me, so I'll continue to try to work with those families. So again, my approach will be kind of like a personalized approach to see what's best for the kids, and of course, work with the Confucius Institute teachers, what they feel is best. We've been very fortunate to have Julie Reese be like a district-type consultant in terms of working with the Chinese teachers, so that will be my plan moving forward. Honestly, it looks like we'll do something though during the school day, during Bobcat time, to make sure we're meeting the needs of those students.
So that'll just kind of bridge them to sixth grade, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, one of the things is that can, and it's a positive thing, these kids kind of have a jump on some of the students who, you know, start taking Chinese in sixth grade. I think we currently have 18 students doing Chinese in sixth grade, so.
How long is Bobcat?
What's that?
How long is Bobcat?
It's 45 minutes, can be, so.
Other questions?
Thank you, done a lot of good work.
Thank you. Dr. Mars?
All right. Thank you, Tom. One of the issues that we've talked about over several board meetings is the idea that we needed a tech integrator at the high school, and we knew that we couldn't afford to go forward that initially as a full-time position, and we're waiting, I was waiting for hiring season to go, go all the way through, so I felt comfortable making a nomination or asking for your approval to have a half-time tech integrator at the high school. Just as a reminder, two major issues going on at the high school is the ninth grade one-to-one program that you approved is Josh is in the process of ordering those machines, and Schoology training for the high school and for the freshman teachers in particular is, has already been organized. But to continue to support our freshman teachers next year, we really need to have a person to do that work like we do at the two elementary schools and the middle schools. So tonight, I would ask for your approval to go forward with a half-time tech integrator at the high school.
You have a motion on that?
I'll make a motion to approve the half-time. I don't know if you can hear me. I'll make a motion to approve the half-time tech integrator at the high school.
And you've located the money for this?
Yes.
Okay. Second, second, moved by Al, second by Brian. Questions for Dr. Mars?
So where does the budget coming from for this?
It'll be the personnel line from the savings that we've made in hiring, Michael.
Other questions?
We've accommodated the health insurance part that was beyond what we had budgeted.
Yeah, the, so it would be a half-time position, so all the benefits appropriated.
I mean, in addition to this, I mean, we've got the savings from staff changes, but we had $100,000 or $50,000.
Yeah, we accounted for that way at the very beginning of the hiring process. Remember, I didn't make any motions on kindergarten until I knew I had that off the table.
Right, I wasn't sure if we completely closed that.
Yeah.
Okay. Ready to vote? All in favor, raise your hands. Seven in favor, that position is authorized.
Thank you very much. Historically, I know I have to do this in the historical context, superintendents used to have authority to act on each school system's behalf when we had special requests related to students transferring from one high school to another. The law changed about two years ago, and it does require a vote on the part of each school board. We do have a current junior whose family is moving to Newmarket, and I'm making the request on behalf of that junior, soon to be a senior, that he be allowed to continue to attend at the high school. This is done with Suzanne's support, and so I would, that would require a vote as well.
So I'd like to move that we allow the student who's been an Oyster River student to remain and graduate with the Oyster River class they're part of.
Moved by Kenny, second by Denise. So I assume this is like every now and then you have a, you know, there's no money transfer?
There's no money transfer. This is all the high schools in the southeast region basically participate in a quid pro quo, because it'll happen to them, it'll happen to us, and so it's really something that we have faithfully done for seniors, so that they don't lose the history of the class that they've gone through high school with.
Okay, good. Ready to vote? All in favor, raise your hand. Seven in favor, that's authorized.
Thank you. Just a quick report on the supper with the community on the proposed middle school. There were about 70 people there. It was very well received. Ron did a great presentation. I was just, I was very energized by the positive nature of the reaction to the proposed middle school, so it was really well done. The silent movie, and this year, a China movie occurred at the Music Hall in Portsmouth. Incredible job. Our middle school jazz band did the silent movie. I have to say that it felt like they were the high school students. But then the high school students came on and did a movie that was composed as a product of their going to China, and our high school Chinese, our high school students who were taking Chinese translated the movie while it was being presented. So about every minute or so, the high school kids would change, they'd go to the microphone, and they were reading in Chinese. It was just, it was the most magnificent thing I'd ever seen. So if the middle school kids appeared to be high school quality, then the high school kids were collegiate quality. It was truly amazing, very inspiring. I also want this evening to acknowledge our retirees. We have, you know, some, we're losing some really, really wonderful people, and that is in your folder as well, so give me a second so I can open mine. Of course, my thing went off. Let me read it from yours.
I gotta find it. Oh, he's got it.
Thank you, appreciate it. Mine went to sleep and lost its connection to the shared drive. So we're losing Brian, Paul Bryan, who's been the high school custodian, is retiring after 19 years of service, just an incredible old guy who I got to know through various roles here at the high school, at Mohearmut, and he was one of the negotiators for their union, just a really super guy, he's done a great job here. We're seeing the retirement of Barbara Kester as a, after five years of being a special ed paraprofessional. Then in the teaching staff, we're losing Linda Reeve after 38 years of middle school language arts, pretty incredible run and much-loved. Eileen Moran is a school nurse, she's been in the district for 23 years. Janice O'Brien is a speech language teacher after 21 years. Pamela Mahoken is a paraprofessional for 21 years. Alexa Grouse as a special ed educator for 15 years. We're losing our counselor at Mastway, Brenda Terrell, after 17 years. And in the facilities department in my office, in accounts payable, June Parody, who's been our accounts payable person for 31 years. So every one of you guys who touch a manifest in all your tenure as a board member, it's because June got them ready for you. And then in the facilities department, in Jim Rozicki's department, Deb Pullen, who has been the secretary for 21 years. So I just want to do a shout-out to these people for the incredible service they've given the district.
Yeah, and I wanted to just share two of them that my son has had, well, actually, didn't have Linda Reeve, but he remembered Linda Reeve because he said, when I told him who was retiring, and he said, oh, I so remember that they presented, he, Linda Reeve and Mr. Irvin presented this musical that they had written called Bittersweet, he remembered the name of it, Bittersweet. It was about child labor harvesting on the Ivory Coast. And so we're talking about something that he saw, he wasn't even in that class, but he saw it in middle school and remembered it all those years later. And then Jan O'Brien, who my son had, and I, when I mentioned that to him, he said, she was so friendly, she was so helpful, she was so approachable, and so, yeah, so to those two that, you know, we had that personal connection. Thank you for the many years of service.
I'd like to also give a shout-out to Brenda Terrell, who's been outstanding. I've known her for 10 years, and my kids, my kids loved her, always a great asset to the Mastway School. They always remember her lunch bunches and getting the kids together, and, you know, kind of, she would always put out the fires before they became fires, which is great with the kids, and the kids loved her. I was great, I was able to, well, Tom and I were able to see her on the way out today for the Mastway School, gave her a nice big hug, and she was all packed up, ready to go, and it's just, you know, it's tough to see him go after all these years, but I know, you know, we all have a life, we all need to retire at some point, but, but so, it was sad to see her go.
And retirement can be good.
Yes, it can.
Spoken like an expert. I also would like to nominate two people to you tonight. Melissa Jean is currently the Milford Special Ed Director and is willing to come on board for a year to replace Misty Low. We interviewed her literally this morning, and it was just a great interview, lots of energy, lots of positive energy, and I don't know that we could have found a better replacement for Misty than Melissa, so I would like to nominate her to you this evening.
Could I have a motion? Denise?
I'll make a motion.
Moved by Denise, is a second, by Brian. So this is a one-year appointment, right?
One-year appointment.
Okay. Questions? All of us in favor, raise your hand. Seven in favor, the student rep in favor.
Thank you. And then the other person I'd like to nominate you, to you this evening is Sean Moore. Sean is a 26-year-old who has been chasing his master's degree. Suzanne and I interviewed him Monday, and he was gone to Europe Monday afternoon to continue his master's. He's fluent in French, seemed like a really sharp young man. The interview team saw him as their first pick, so we'd like to nominate Sean Moore to you in the world language position at the high school.
Denise?
It says here Sean Fontaine?
I'm sorry, I wrote Moore. I don't know why I did that, thank you, Denise.
He's replacing Elliot Moore.
That's why I did it.
Yeah. So I'd like to nominate Sean Fontaine.
Thank you, Denise.
Moved by Denise, second by Michael. Questions? All in favor, raise your hand. Seven in favor, the student rep in favor.
Thank you. And then the final thing I'd like the board...
Can I ask you a question about hiring?
Sure.
Have we given you, normally, we give you authorization to do hiring during the summer. Have we given you that?
No, it's later in the agenda.
Okay.
Yep, and so the last thing I'd like the board to consider is a charge related to the middle school CDE in grading. It's in your packet. If I take the time to read it out loud so that the community knows what you're looking at. The board charges the superintendent to create a committee to assess the effectiveness of the current middle school progress reporting system, and if necessary, to make recommendations for change. The committee should be composed of parents, teachers, and students. Using survey and focus group tools, the committee will seek out the views of students, parents, and teachers on issues that include, but are not limited to, the clarity and precision of the current system, the effect of the system on student motivation, and the transition from middle school to high school system. The committee will complete its work in the, that should be the spring, I'm sorry. The committee should complete its work in the spring... The committee should complete its work in the spring of 2020, will start in the fall of 2019. The board will support the use of the current budget in support of this. So essentially, I have a couple of lines, you have a line on consultants, and I have a line on consultants, so if we do need to spend anything, we would spend it from those lines, but I'm not anticipating this would be a big budget issue. Questions?
I have an addition to it, actually. I said they will also compile and publish a parent-friendly overview of the K-12 confidentiality-based education, explaining the reasons and benefits of CBE and how it is used at the middle school in, at ORMS and the middle school. Interaction of the CBE with power school report cards, process of discernment of CBE implementation at the Oyster River High School, and description of how the CBE programs will be evaluated at the middle school. So that was in our communication packet. What you're essentially doing is a large public outreach. You can't, I just, it's hard to do a public outreach if you don't have the supporting material, so you need to develop the supporting material, so it should be linked to this. The reason I really think it should be linked to it, if you're going to bring a group of parents and that in, they'll have a chance to look at what you're writing up, and they can give you feedback on it if it's effective. So I just, I think that should be part of this whole thing.
I guess I would like to speak against that being part of it, because I think this is a defined task that was stated in the letter that the superintendent set out. I think if we extend it in this way, it's, I mean, obviously providing some of this information to the committee, but I think we should have something focused on the reporting system. I think if this is, if we want, I'm not opposed to this, I just don't think that should be part of this charge to the committee. I think that gives too much to do.
Can I speak to this?
Sure.
So this is actually the work that Suzanne, Jay, and the administrative team is starting tomorrow.
Okay.
So this was actually kind of the work plan I had for them in the morning. So the two different issues, one's on grading, one's on CBE, and the reason that this is coming up tomorrow is all the discussions we've had in the last two weeks, two meetings about CBE, so I had this ready to go.
Yeah, I just, I don't, they're not too, I don't see them as two separate issues, I just don't. I just, I think that they're one, they need to be one and the same. One is utilized to explain, it's hard to ask people what they think if you don't have the supporting material, and I really would like them to be linked together.
I wasn't arguing that. I was saying that the work was, I had the work ready to go, starting tomorrow already on this, so it's going to be done.
Okay.
When will it be done?
Well, the idea, so the full idea, thank you, Michael, smarking over there, was that we, the administrative team, at the end of every school year, meets and does a workshop for the entire day. This was, this is the principal activity, along with diversity tomorrow when we meet, and the goal was that we would have this parent-friendly overview, as Al refers to it, we would have that done before we opened the school in the fall. So this work is summer work to prepare for the fall. And then in talking to Tom and Denise, what I planned to do, once the administrative team had formulated this work, was to come back in August, the second meeting in August, and workshop that work with the board, so that you would know exactly what the plan is in the upcoming school year. So, one of the things that constantly drives me batty, quite frankly, is I feel like I'm always chasing the tail instead of being on the front end of things, and so having listened to this now for three board meetings, I want to get ahead of it for the upcoming school year, and so this is exactly the work that we were going to start tomorrow, that we would finish in August to present to you, take your feedback from there, and run with it. So that's where we were.
I think that's, that's great. I think that's a really important educational component. There's going to have to be some educational component to, for the community before this committee can solicit constructive input from the community.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I'm fine with it. I had no idea because it wasn't in our packet or anything like that, but again, my fear is like, there's, generally when you do public outreach, you got to have the reference material along with it, because you can't get a good feedback if you don't have the reference material. And so the way this was worded or put together, you didn't link them together, so it caused me to really question the thing, but as long as you're going to get it done, I'm fine with it.
And Jim, do you have it in mind also to have the committee, we're going to workshop it, right, in August, and then will the committee also have an opportunity to offer feedback for fine tuning, or will it be a finished product?
Yeah, the whole point of bringing the plan, and so if you think about the strategic plan, right, and so we did this whole five-year piece, and we all know the further you go in time, the less exact it is, but where, we also know that the closer you are to the time of implementation, the more exact it is. So what I've taken is the strategic plan goal for year one, and the worksheet for year one, that's what I'll hand out to them tomorrow, to the principals, they created it, so it's not going to be like news to them, but then we're going to take that year-one worksheet and really spell out what we're going to do along these lines that Al has outlined, these are all right on the list. So the reason that it's not anything you know about is because we haven't done the work yet, and so I was going to bring it to you in August, not in June.
Well, I just wanted to make sure that it's part of the, you know, that it's linked to the charge, because it's not a parent.
And, you know, in terms of it's linked or not linked, it makes no difference to me, because this work is going to get done anyway. So if it's linked, fine, if it's not linked, it's also fine, because it's not going to change the outcome.
And I appreciate what Al raised, and I think it even has some parallels to what we were talking about with world language, too, about having informed groups offering their input, and I think the value of kind of what Al put forward is I think that we, on the education side, and I use "we," I'm not an educator in the school system, but we have our notions of, we implement something, and we feel that this is, we base it on, you know, exploring, we base it on study, we implement it, and we feel that this is the result. But the end result, which is what students feel, what parents feel, is often different than what our intention was or how that program is coming to back, and I think that's why this issue has reared back at us. So if we skip that first, if you're plunging first into the school side evaluating it and coming up with ideas, before we're really knowing the impact it's had, I think we might lose very important information, because there's a, I think there's a big disconnect in our district between what we hope to implement and what parents and students are feeling from this process, and that until we close that disconnect, I don't think we're going to really move forward in a constructive way.
So you're saying we shouldn't be evaluating the progress report?
No, we should, but I think the beginning of it, I think really is, I think this committee is the beginning of it, because the committee, which brings forward not just educators, but is bringing forward students and parents, allows us better to assess what we have in place. Without knowing the impact on the user group, students, we really don't have a sense of what that program meant. It's, you know, the analogies, which I always draw from on medicine, is we could implement as physicians, you know, recommendations, policies, guidelines, but unless they're having the outcome that you want, which is benefiting patients, there's no worth, and so you really always need to go to the patient, and you need to find out, so what did our change in strategy mean to you? How are things different now that we have competency-based education and now competency-based grading? Hearing that, having, starting that dialogue, and that points out whether it's a flawed model or a good model, and if it's a good model, where did we move astray in trying to communicate the importance of that model to parents and students? There's something in the community right now that what we're trying to do is not seen by the community as positive in its outcome.
So it seems to me there's like two prongs, at least, I mean, one, to communicate what, competency-based education has a lot of elements that are not part of the reporting system.
That's right.
And I think that there's a need to communicate better what those, what all those components are. I still think that after three and a half, three years, to assess how, you know, at the end of the year, how that reporting system works, and having a committee set up to do that is a useful thing. So this is what this, so maybe we're talking about two things that are going on, two different things.
Concurrently.
But I think we need to commit ourselves, in my view, to evaluating that progress reporting system. Are you agreeing with that?
Totally agree with it, and-
But that's not all, I think.
Right, and I think part of being able to evaluate it again is making sure we have that right input, and so the right, do we want to top-load it and start from the administrative level, or do we want to start it more from the bottom up? And, I mean, we've heard from a lot of parents, and I think, I think it'd be very valuable to start the discussion with those parents who are living the lives that their kids are living, and really trying to understand what they're seeing as their kid has gone through these couple of years of school, what that's meant. If we just start to evaluate it without that input, I think we're going to miss that piece, and that's where I think the communication comes in.
So this charge includes parents, so the parents are part of this process. This is the part that's evaluation. What I'm hearing from Jim is information and explanation.
Sure, it's the communications part, which is also, I don't know why this is so loud all of a sudden. There's also the communications piece, that's part of tomorrow's workshop with the administrators, where the very issues that Al has raised will be addressed similar to the way that we have addressed the new, the proposed new middle school, and also similar to the way that Friday update works. So there's, the third component tomorrow is on communication, and part of the communication has to be on CBE. There's bigger issues than CBE in the district. There's all kinds of issues to communicate, CBE is one of them, and so part of the work we'll do tomorrow is to build a communications plan that's both, going back to another pet peeve, that's both electronic and traditional.
So I, I mean, I think the way you're doing it is exactly the way I thought it should be done, which is like, that you, that you are able to roll out an explanation of how, exactly how does this work in the school system, and I think that's a, it gives everyone a base level of what they, how it's supposed to work. And so when you do all that work and you roll it out in the fall, and people can look at it, they can say, "Oh, yeah, yeah, I see what you're trying to accomplish, but this is actually what's happening." They ask you the evaluation. So that's why I say it's really, really important when you do a public outreach like this, that the reference material is there, so you give a baseline for everybody to work from. It's, I mean, you can ask everybody what you think, but the idea is we want them to, we want them to know what we're trying to accomplish, or how it's supposed to work, and then when they give us the feedback, they can tell us, "Well, yeah, this does work, but by the way, this does not." So that was my whole point. I think the communication element comes first, and then your evaluation tool, whether it be survey, or targeted interviews, or forums, you know, a mixture of thick and thin engagement, you'll be ready for that. So, again, I'm fine.
So would you say if you backloaded it and had it at the end of next year, so you've had a chance to communicate?
Yeah, exactly. Yeah, no, I think it's great. I think that's, I, all I ever thought was, I was, when do you do the actual evaluation? But I'm like, but if you're ready by the fall, you'll have flexibility, and you'll have time to go through it, I think. And again, that, the important thing about the communication element, too, is that we're going to have people transitioning, and so that institutional knowledge is there so they can understand, okay, I'm going from the elementary school to the middle school, how does it work? So, you know, that's how, that's why I'm saying it's linked together, that the educational component gets everybody on the same baseline, so that you have an effective evaluation, hopefully.
And then just my final thought on this for the board is, the CBE component, remember, is required at the high school. It's optional at the middle school, but it doesn't make sense to have a program at the high school, doesn't feed in from the middle school. The parent concerns were specific to grading. They weren't challenging competency-based education, they were challenging how you report the results in the classroom. So I think Tom's issue is, you know, let's focus in on that piece, because that's the piece where the parents are expressing concern. Al's issue is, let's make sure everybody has a common base that they're having a conversation from. So they're two different issues, but they're going to have it concurrently, because they have to.
Wait, I'm sorry. I was, I was going to take this in a little bit different direction. I think this is fantastic in terms of understanding the experience and perception of our immediate community, but I think that if this committee is going to make recommendations for changes, we also need to be looking outside, and we need to be looking at external research, benchmarks, other districts' experiences, and best practices, if we're going to consider recommending changes. I don't know if this is exactly the right committee to do that, but they need to at least consider that before-
Well, you know, we have an action committee, Michael, you always can have an action committee come out with additional recommendations when they've finished their charge. So, you know, you, there's stages to this, and my biggest concern between the communications piece, this, and the diversity piece tomorrow, is, you know, getting the work done, and that's why I want to make sure that it's clear what it is we're trying to accomplish, because, you know, reality is, just like we were talking earlier, time is finite, it's not, and so we need to make sure we have a focus. So I think that can always evolve right into the next phase, because I think this isn't one of these things that gets over in, you know, one try, I think this is communication ongoing.
And I think we could extend beyond, if they make recommendations, we could, you know, do further research, you know. We're not bound by their recommendations, but I mean, if they have like a consensus, and they say that basically this might be something you want to think about at changing, I think that's useful for us to learn, so that's all, I mean, we're not bound by that.
I don't think we should consider one without the other, though. I don't think we should consider only, only our own internal experience and perception, or only external-
I'm not saying that.
Input. But we're saying we want, we want recommendations based on only one, is what I think I just heard you say. Go do focus groups and give us recommendations. I don't want recommendations without considering the whole picture.
Okay. I mean, it would seem to me that they're going to gather a lot of information, they're going to have people say, you know, making suggestions, they're going to say, "This makes sense to us to make this change," and we're not bound by that? To force this group to be, to do all that, I think would be a huge task for them, so I think, I think this is a discreet, defined task that I think needs to be done. Denise?
I'd like to, I don't really, I kind of looking at time, and I mean, I know it's important to have a discussion, but I'm kind of thinking that maybe we should try and wrap up the discussion and have a vote.
Okay.
But I'm not saying nobody else can speak, but I'm just mindful of the time, and-
Do I move it?
Yeah, I guess I'll move the question, if we could.
Is there a second? I don't think it's been. Second by Brian.
And hearing what Denise said, but I think the important thing, I think, is what Dr. Moore said, is I think we have decoupled grading from that system of education, and that is such a paramount thing that I think we need to communicate to the community at this point, is they're very different concepts, and that, I think that, when it first arose, that was not clear.
So I'll take one stab at like what you're trying to say, I think, hopefully when it comes out, when we get recommendations from what, that they are ground, that we, that they are grounded in some like data or factual way of how other districts are, how it actually, I mean, people can come up with a lot of recommendations, but it may not necessarily be the best thing. I think that's what you're trying to say, it's like that there is some research that supports what we're about to change.
Yeah, I wrote it down, Michael, I'll make sure it's part of it. To give you that-
Was I on track?
Yes.
So we have a motion in a second? Do we vote?
What are we voting on, if I can ask? Are we voting on-
Voting on the one charge.
Come on, just the one. Okay.
Yeah, we're voting on the charge as written.
The original draft.
I have the motion in a second to move the question, I don't have a motion in a second.
Oh.
Well, I think, I think Denise, the intent was to move, to move the-
Charge as written.
And was that, was that your intent? Brian?
So, yeah, so I'll motion, I'm sorry, I thought we had already done that, but I will make a motion to approve the charge as written.
I'm sorry?
Are you saying there's two votes, Laura? One is to take a vote on the fact that Denise made a motion to move the question?
But we never, it was never moved, really.
I'll withdraw that, I'll withdraw that. I'm just making a motion to approve- I'm just making a motion to approve the charge as written.
Moved by Denise. And Brian, you second it, right? Okay. You ready to vote on this? How many in favor, raise your hands? Six in favor, all opposed. Michael's opposed. Okay, the charge is to be of the charge. That's, that ends your list, right?
Yes.
Okay. Business administrator?
Good evening. I have a couple of things tonight. First one on the list is the copier lease. We're coming to the end of our current lease for copiers and printers. This new proposal is recommended we go with Canon for five years. Thirty-nine devices, 24 copiers, 15 printers, maintenance and supplies. We're using the pre-bid from the National IPA contract. This, again, it's a five-year lease with no increases on cost per copy. Josh has done a good job of meeting with the principals and figured out exactly what we need for printers at this time. I apologize, I didn't give you the actual details, but if you'd like that, I do have that on what every single printer is in every building. Just a big spreadsheet like this. I have it if you need it, but...
Shouldn't we not have like a value, a monetary value that we approve?
It, no, it's...
Just a total value, maybe?
I can tell you that it, boy, I don't have that. It's $67,464 per year for hardware upgrades and the district-wide rollout. It's estimated, based on what we have now, we'll have savings of, oh, like $97,000 in the first year of what we currently have. So that's, the value is, that is the lease per year cost for the lease.
Are we maintaining the same numbers in terms of pieces of equipment? Are we making changes?
We're making changes. We are making some changes, yeah. And as I said, Josh has met with the principals just to make sure we kind of right-size everything and know, you know, after analyzing what we currently have, the usage on those machines, if they're being overused, underused, and swapping them out based on that data.
So are we increasing, decreasing?
Overall, I think it's a, it's a...
One or two.
Maybe one or two. It's not huge.
Sue, does that include the maintenance as well?
Yeah, it does. It does.
Do you make a motion?
Yeah, sure.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the copier lease as presented.
Moved by Denise. Second by Brian. Further questions for Sue? Hearing that all in favor, raise your hand. Seven in favor, the student rep in favor?
I abstained.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, I'm going to abstain. I just don't feel I have enough information to understand that situation.
So six in favor, one abstention.
Okay, the next item I have is the approval of transit vans. And Lisa's here, in case you have any questions that I can't answer. But currently, we are using vans to transport students. And after some careful consideration, Lisa would prefer at this point to replace the vans with transit vans. These are 10 passenger vans. One of the issues we have is, we don't have enough of them. We've had, we've had six, we're down to four?
Three.
Three, we're down to three. We did have money in the budget to approve the purchase of more vans. We would like to buy four of them on a lease, well, actually, it wouldn't be a lease, it would be a loan, a four-year loan, so that we can cover the transportation needs that we currently have. We do have some 77 passengers transporting six to eight students because we just don't have any other vehicles. The vans we have are limited to five? Five students. And the reason we have them is we have some special needs students that need the smaller vehicles, they're easier to get in and out of some of the driveways we have. So right now, Lisa has done some, a lot of research. I think you have the details on those vehicles. Did I give you the actual?
Yeah.
Yeah. She's called several dealers, couple of them didn't have them available. These would be made to order with what we need on them, the special things we need on them. Any other questions?
It doesn't, it says $20,000 down payment, but it doesn't say how much the total would be.
You're right. My apologies, I don't...
And how much per year? Because it looks like it's a four-year payment, so...
It is a four-year payment. Oh, did I forget that? It's, do you remember, Lisa? No, it's somewhere around, it's just under what we have in the budget. I want to say it's, I can pull it up on my laptop.
I wonder whether, if we don't have a figure, whether we could really approve it.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
I mean, if we approved it the next meeting, would that create a hardship? I don't know if she has it.
Do you have it? She might have it, I'm sorry. Yeah, I had a, actually had a spreadsheet with that that had a couple of different options. There's an option for a four-year, five-year, or six-year. And I think we went with the four-year.
Yeah, it says, it does say four-year and the memo, it just doesn't have what the amount was.
I'm sorry. While she's looking for that, did you want to move to the budget update?
Sure.
This is as of June 12th. At that time, we had about $900,000 left, winding down, really close to where we wanted to be. Last payroll is next week, so that will give us a better idea. I really anticipate there'll be more than that because we have a lot in bus drivers and I know we're not going to spend that. So everything is looking right where we thought it would be. Questions?
Sue, why the operating expenses from Astaway are at two-thirds where they should be? Is there a reason why we've done well over there?
Nope, we went by it.
No, I can look at the actual accounts there, but no, just haven't spent everything that's in that budget that was available.
Oh, it's not a complaint, it's a...
No, no, I mean, I...
Definitely positive.
We're not done yet, but, yeah.
I don't know if it was maybe because of the LED lighting or anything like that.
No, no, that's, most of that is supplies.
Part of it is, I think we had budgeted, no, no, I'm sorry, that was the next year, never mind. I'm thinking of next year's budget.
The extra spending in facilities, what?
Excuse me?
And the overspending in facilities, what?
That is the infrastructure upgrade, that's the monies we got from the state. So if you look down on the bottom, we've added back in. So that's recorded as an expenditure in our regular budget, but we didn't approve that in our budget, so we add that to the bottom line. So that overage is the result of the money we got back from the state, and that's the way we need to record it.
And then that line at the very bottom, the 572?
That's the money.
Is the money that covered those projects?
Covered that project, yeah, two projects that we did. Yes, correct. So that was the best way that I could see to show it to you.
Okay. And was the 143 overage in special ed is out-of-district placements that were not...
Could be, there's a number of areas. And again, that's, that's as of the 12th. There was a lot out there still encumbered for services that we anticipate. That may not be true, so we may not see that.
There was an over, there was now a district placement around April. That was pretty expensive.
Right, right. But we may, we may see that turn around by the end of the year, just based on the other items that are in that same category. But that's true, we did have a big placement. Find it?
What was the amount of fund balance that was committed for tax relief at the end of the year?
350, 350.
So do we have numbers for the transit?
Yes, we do.
Okay.
What's the, 76 per year for four years? And a forty-two, nine, five, three, seven, six, for four years.
And what is the interest on that?
Sorry, I don't have that either. This particular one was lower than the other. We had another estimate, right? We can get that for you if you don't want to, I'm sorry. And it does require a $20,000 down payment.
So Sue, the question is, without all the specifics in front of the board, is there a problem in delaying until July 10th?
Is there?
Okay, so let's, let's do that. Because this seems too funky and unusual.
Does that prevent us from making the down payment out of this year's budget?
We'll have to take it on next year's.
Okay.
Okay, so that'll be deferred till the next meeting. Is that right?
Yep.
Okay, great.
Any other questions? No?
No.
Thank you.
Thank you. Student Center report. Long last.
Today's the last day of school, so that's exciting. Everyone has finished their finals and everyone's looking forward to summer. And like the only thing that's really going on right now is that juniors and seniors are filling up parking applications and the first deadline is on the 21st of this month, so...
Uh-huh.
That's all I had to say.
Is the park, maybe this, is the parking plan finalized now for next year for student parking?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So we have made a few adjustments to our parking permit process for next year. We've created four pools. The first pool is for seniors who are interested in having a, a parking spot share, so they could either ride together to school or share one parking spot. There's a reduced cost to that, and that's the incentive to get kids to carpool, seniors to carpool, is to have a reduced fee for the parking permit. That's the first pool, and we are collecting applications for that. We are also collecting applications for the second pool, which are seniors that are individual drivers, and that has, the fee for that is more than for the parking pool, the kids that are interested in sharing a spot. So those two pools, we're collecting applications. We actually have been watching today to see how many kids are interested in doing the shared spot. And we have, as of lunch today, which was the last time I looked, we had about five applications from seniors that had, that were interested in sharing a parking permit. Whether that's that they're carpooling together or they're just sharing the spot, I'm not sure, but we were, we're pleased about that. If we can have more seniors doing that, then we'll, it'll be, we'll be able to open up more spaces for junior drivers as well. And then in August, we will open up another session of applications, and that will be open to seniors again as well as juniors. So juniors that are interested in sharing a spot. And also, if we have spaces after that, then we will open it up to individual junior drivers.
So when, I read your initial plan, which I think was somewhat controversial, but I really liked it a lot because it really conforms to what our sustainability goals are. But at the end of, as you move through the year and you see the parking things, are we going to reevaluate it?
Yes, so we will continue to look at that. The idea is to continue with the parking committee throughout the school year and to have discussions around sustainability and parking because this, it is going, the number of students that could drive to school is going to increase as our student body increases. So right now, we have about approximately 205 seniors and approximately 205 juniors. However, the sophomore class is closer to 220. And so, and these are guesstimates because we're still enrolling and that number will fluctuate, but the numbers of drivers will increase. So, and this year's graduating class was, you know, 170s, so it's not, I mean, we're, that's going to become more and more of a challenge. So we'd like to find a sustainable solution that would allow for more drivers.
How many drivers, Suzanne? How many actual drivers?
We usually have around 85% of the seniors that apply for a parking permit, and then it goes down for juniors for the numbers. But we don't typically have a lot of spaces for juniors, so, and we will still, we will still have the off-site parking as well. We will still utilize that.
Sue, just my two cents on, I think we, if we look at it from a sustainability point, we don't want more drivers, we actually want less drivers. And so I would follow kind of the wisdom of cities that are doing congestion, kind of entry into cities, or highways that have those HOV lanes. And like I even noticed with the juniors, there was no price differential between whether you wanted to submit applications where you're jointly being with someone or if you're single. There's a hierarchy, but I would really encourage using that price differential and a meaningful price differential to really give a benefit to people who are going to carpool. Because I mean, that's, you know, driving to whatever city and if you carpool, you get into that lane or trying to get access into London or New York City, you know, that defines it. And I think if we go by our sustainability, we don't want kids driving to school. That's, this notion of, you know, 200 students driving their individual car alone to school is not a good thing, so I think we could influence that a little bit more.
We're also using some other incentives such as students that carpool or that share a space so that there's fewer cars coming to school, that they have preferential parking. So we're looking at where the, where the best parking spots are for kids, so the easiest to get out. And so, so we're also looking at that. And having numbered spots, I think will make a big difference.
Are there, as far as the off-site parking, is there a limit in terms of the number of students who can park there? And how does, how is that determined?
We haven't had a high interest in the off-site parking, so we haven't had to, we haven't had to turn students away that are interested in utilizing the off-site parking. So it would be a similar system, it would be a lottery system.
How many, how many spaces are available down there?
We have 15 spaces at the church, and then we also have been, the Durham, town of Durham was gracious enough, not this year, but the previous year, we did utilize the lot down by the landing.
Okay.
And that was, and that was approximately the same number of spaces.
Well, it seems like this is, what you've taken is a step in the direction of encouraging carpooling.
Yes.
So I think this is, this is a great first step and we'll see how it goes. So I know it's not easy to make changes.
No.
Somebody said the university, define the university was a group of individuals with a common grievance about parking.
Parking, yeah.
And I think that's kind of cool.
That's funny.
Yeah, thank you.
Thanks a lot. So why don't we take a break now, five minutes? Okay? Okay, next on the agenda, we have the Communication Campaign, which I think is a major discussion. And in planning meetings, Denise, I and Jim were thinking that the primary center of the next meeting would be Communications. So, one of two, and I don't think we're gonna get to the point of voting on a Communication goal tonight, I think there's just too many components to it. So, one possibility would be to put, considering we still have a number of things to talk about tonight, would be to defer this discussion and have it be the main topic of discussion in the July meeting, or to set a frame and just limit our time in terms of the 15 minutes to present ideas on this and then move on. Otherwise, I think we will be here forever. So, so my preference would be, I think it's late, I think it's, I think to talk about it now, I think it would be difficult, I think we should finish the agenda and push this to the July meeting. I think a lot of the things that were very time-intensive, like getting the middle school website designers up, I think Jim was talking about the communications, the work in community, the work in competency, which is in motion, so some of these things are in motion. So, in my view, we could push it off till July, it'll be okay, and then we'd have, have that be the central thing we talk about, so...
So, my intent, when I talked to Tom and Denise about the July 10th workshop, was, again, going back to tomorrow with the administrators, another major component of the day is to establish a process, both electronic and traditional, for having a comprehensive communications plan. Some of the things on the goal, you know, that's written, we either have accomplished or in the process of doing, some of them we haven't started. But, again, like, when we talked about CBE, this was a center of administrative work tomorrow, and so if the board can wait till July 10th, then we'll actually be able to present many of these issues in terms of how we're going to address them. So, it's, it's an actionable item tomorrow. I was envisioning a workshop on July 10th specifically on communication, and we would have an initial report from tomorrow's meeting to share with you.
So, is that agreeable? Defer to?
Yeah, I mean, I don't wanna have it where we have five minutes. It doesn't make sense to have a major discussion item where you only have five minutes or something. It's counterproductive, it's, what's the point? I mean, so, and I think there's, on here, while we have taken some things off the list, I think particularly number, since you're gonna have a thing tomorrow, you can circle number one and number two, those are big things that need to be addressed.
But one, I think, has been addressed, right?
Well, just the proposed middle school website, but there's more inside that.
Oh, I redid it, and the one is actually to provide everyone, I guess I swapped it around, provide everyone who creates content for mass emails, training of effective email design. This is, this is just so you have consistency amongst your secretaries, everybody is putting out something.
Are you reading off a different goal, Al?
I, I did, I did actually.
I was, yeah, it's not what, that's not what I have.
Oops, it's like, I mean, I can, I can, so the two that, that I think that you need to really bring up, that one is that, that you have consistency among, your secretaries are awesome, but you talk about systems and everyone does different stuff. And number two actually came out of the Technology Committee, which is curation of your digital collection. So, your digital collection is a library, imagine if you had this library and we led a library and come in, say, twice a month, how it would work, and that's what we do with our digital collection, so that needs to be addressed.
So, you could come back on, in the July meeting and say, this is, this is kind of either how we're addressing it or how we could address it, and we could...
Exactly, that's, I mean, we'll make a good start on it tomorrow, because, you know, again, this has been a discussion through three different board meetings, so I knew it was critical for us to jump on it as soon as the school year ended. Traditionally, what we use, the workshop day tomorrow was to reflect back on the school year, but if I do that, then I'm gonna lose a whole, a very important foundation day to address the next school year. We meet twice officially during the summer, once, once in June and then once in August, and we need to set the stage to get this work and the CBE going. Nice thing about this Communication Goal is CBE is embedded in it, so it's not like it's an additional thing to do, it's already in here. So, you know, I think that we can get a good solid start on it tomorrow and, and have something more meaty for you on the 10th.
Is that agreeable? Okay. Motion to authorize the superintendent offer contracts to qualify teachers and staff during the summer months, this is a traditional thing.
Sorry, Tom, are we gonna go?
I'm sorry, sorry, I'm Michael, I'm, yeah, I'm sorry. Michael, yeah.
All right, so, so you had in your blue folder tonight a letter to, a draft, a proposed letter to representatives and senators, and a couple newspapers regarding the state budget. So I apologize for adding this in tonight, kind of at the last minute. However, this is something that if we're going to do this, it is time-critical because, because of where the budget, state budget process is. So, the point here is that the House and Senate budgets that were passed this spring, both increased education funding by reasonable amounts. The significant difference is that the House budget had a much larger increase and a much lower threshold for towns for receiving increased adequacy aid, or I don't think they call it adequacy aid, but increased, increased funding from the state, and also provided a separate funding source besides local property tax revenue to fund that. The Senate, the Senate proposal, while it did increase education funding, was not by as much, and did not provide an additional source of revenue to support that in subsequent years. And so, the point of this letter essentially is for, is proposing that this Oyster River School Board go on record, asking that the Conference Committee that's working on hammering out the state budget between the two houses and our legislators that represent Madbury, Lee and Durham, support a final answer that leans more towards the HB1, towards the House version of the budget. So, the first page is, is that letter, the second page is an almost identical letter, there's only a few words changed to make it more suitable for newspaper letter editor distribution.
And the title of this is critical, because it's in the House Conference Committee now, and so this, I really appreciate Michael taking the initiative to put this together, because it really does speak to the right issue. The House, the House bill provides an alternative funding source, the Senate bill doesn't, therefore, they lessen the amount of money, but if they're really trying to make an impact on property taxes, they need to put as much into public education as they possibly can, because right now, across the state, poor communities or not, the property tax is carrying a public school system.
So, could we have a motion to authorize, Michael, to send these to the senators and representatives and to the, are you gonna, is it Foster's, is it gonna go to, or?
I proposed, yes, so our local legislators, the members of the Conference Committee, which I, I have a list now of those, and then I proposed initially Foster's and the Concord Monitor.
Yeah, Michael, I can do the editor one and use our PR link, because he'll hit the Concord Monitor, he'll hit across the whole state.
Okay.
So, that, I'll take care of that one for you.
Okay.
Can you send that to me, did you send this to me electronically already?
I believe I did send you a Microsoft Word version.
I'll get it, all right, I'll take care of that tomorrow.
So, a motion is to authorize these two letters to be sent out on behalf of the School Board? So, I'll move that, that these two letters can be sent out on behalf of the School Board.
Oh, second one, I have a lot to do.
Sorry, Michael, okay.
And, Michael, I really thank you for doing this, and again, it's, I think, a very important political outreach that we do as a board, and we'll get the specific names of the committee members.
I actually have those, I didn't have them in time to put them, but I have them here, so...
And just, again, the, you know, with the thing that I had raised earlier, that issue with the education, is it time for us to consider raising our, our level higher than just sending a letter that might sit wherever, and trying to schedule meetings with some key people? Because you cite in here, the House passed something accessible, you know, that's acceptable, the Senate not. Should we find out maybe some of our districts that we use as our comparison that probably feel the same, and try to set up some meetings? Because I think that face-to-face encounter takes it to another level. I think that letters are great and so important, but I worry that it's just a letter. And having that dialogue might carry more weight, especially if we band together with a few other meaningful school districts in the state. So I support this and would even advocate another step.
So, are you ready to vote on this? All in favor, raise your hand. Seven in favor. These two, we authorize these two letters to be sent out on behalf of the Oyster River School Board, thanks, Michael, for doing that. Well, thank you. A motion to authorize the superintendent offer contracts to qualify teachers and staff during the summer months. Denise?
I'll make that motion.
Moved by Denise, is her second. Second by Brian. This is, traditionally, we do this because we don't want to meet twice during the summer. All those in favor, raise your hand. Seven in favor.
Then we need to do the speech pathologist, Tom.
Okay.
So, in terms of nominations tonight, I would nominate Allison Richards to you as the speech pathologist. She's replacing Emily Johnson, her, the budgeted amount was 53,100, the recommended salary for Allison is 55. This is one of those unusual situations where we don't save money. Speech therapists and counselors and those types of positions tend to be hard to find. We're really pleased to be able to recommend her to you tonight.
Do you have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Moved by Denise, is her second. Brian, questions about this appointment? Are you done, all in favor, raise your hand. Seven in favor.
Thank you.
We have, need to approve the data governance plan that Josh brought before us last meeting. I'm sure we've taken in every word of it.
It's crazy. I'll make a motion to approve the data governance plan for second read approval.
Moved by Denise, second by Brian. Other questions for Josh? It's an amazing effort, Josh.
Yeah, it really is. I went through the pages and it was like, oh my gosh, wow. It's a lot of work.
Yeah, one important issue, too. So, are you ready to vote for second read? All in favor, raise your hand. Seven in favor. The data governance plan is approved. We deferred on the transit van lease, right?
Yes.
Next meeting. A list of policies, Denise?
Yeah, so, first, first of all, there is a suggestion, I have a slight change for policy KF, which is use of school buildings and facilities. We made some changes to it, and it's just a matter of the order in which they sort of, it sort of appears, just to kind of make it flow better. It's page two, under insurance, and what I would like to suggest is the second sentence that says, "The superintendent or designee may grant waivers of certificate of insurance in exceptional cases," that should be at the end of that first paragraph, because it's like, the rest of the paragraph talks about how they need to have the insurance and it, they can't have the policy be terminated, and so on and so forth. And then at the end of that, it seems like that's the logical place to put that the superintendent or designee may grant the waiver. So, and then the only other thing that I just, the Oyster River Cooperative School District shall be listed on their certificate and named as an additional insured, that, is that the correct wording? That just sounded odd. Okay, so we'll leave that, we'll leave that the way it is. So, with that change, I'd like to make a motion to approve KF.
Is this for first read?
Uh, for first, no, yeah, first read.
Okay.
Yes.
Moved by Denise, is her second. Second by Brian. Further comments on it?
I didn't, were there, was the intention to have the Policy Committee meeting minutes included, as usual? It's referenced, but...
So Wendy wasn't there?
And I was keeping minutes, so...
Would you recite those?
There's the review.
She did read them, and she said I did a good job. Well, that's the other...
We should include that, then.
We should include that.
That should be noted in the minutes.
He had the official coffee mug stain on it.
Do you have any specific questions?
No, it's just, I usually go to the minutes first. Yeah. I do, I, I mean, we just, we just revised this policy a year ago, so what's driving the revision now?
A concern about equity in how it was being applied and making sure that no, no group was getting preferential treatment, and that the charges that we were charging for the use of facility were applied consistently. So it was just, there was actually some, just minor changes overall, Michael, it wasn't a, you know, a complete overhaul.
And I think another thing that's shown is the R document that went with it, which did have changes.
Right.
And it, and it, there's kind of in the R document, there's specific, there's kind of like a hierarchical...
The hierarchy was already there, but we clarified, you know, that two non-public entities competing for space, we created criteria, because there was a possibility that two groups would compete for the same space, but Andy Lethrop did a fantastic job balancing the two groups' needs, so we didn't end up with the conflict. But should we ever end up in a conflict, we created a process to resolve the conflict.
The, the R doc and the Schedule of Fees, that's been finalized, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Is that, is that online?
Yes, the R is online, and the other piece of the R includes, we found that there were organizations that might have made arrangements to use the facility, didn't use the facility.
Right.
And so, it, there might have been another group that might have been able to take opportunity, so we tried to add some teeth to that as well, that, that's gonna count against a group as far as being able to reserve property.
And Andy's met with the groups that, and explained that to them, so they, they know that they need to tell us, once they make a reservation, if they're not going to use it, they need to let us know, so we can free it up for another user.
Maybe when we do second read, we can bring that, even though we don't usually approve R documents, why don't we include the... R documents, why don't we include that?
Well, that's a good idea.
Because there was a lot of substance in that R, and we can get some feedback, too. Maybe that's worth doing.
Maybe I can even find my minutes.
So are you ready to approve this for first read with the revisions that Denise suggested? All those in favor, please raise your hands. Seven in favor. Those are approved.
Okay.
Yeah?
So then, on policy IJL, this is on the library and instructional material selection and reconsideration policy. So this was, my understanding, was a combination, basically it was-
A rewrite.
A rewrite.
Yeah. So the reason that this doesn't have strikeouts or underlines is this is a completely new policy content. And the reason it was is because what we found was it built in contradictions between existing policies. Kathy Pierce and the high school staff led a review committee when a material was asked to be reviewed by a parent. The old policies really were dated, they talked about books, and the complaint was about a movie. And what we also recognized was that the committee was kind of, was all in-house baseball, and we wanted to make sure that the committee included community members as well. And so what Kathy Pierce and the librarians did was they basically pretty much took the old policies and set them off to the side because of the inherent conflict, and they rewrote the policy from basically a blank slate forward to make sure that it was consistent with practice. So it is essentially a new policy from the beginning to end with the same code.
I have a couple questions about the committee. Now, just put it out as a summary suggestion. I think the number of members should be defined. You know, instead of saying members of, members of the teaching staff, how many? Four? You know, something like that? School administrator, fine, up to two students, I'd say two students, you know, be definite. I mean, maybe a student, they can't all attend, but I'd be definite on that. Up to two, I would put parents, you know, why not, why just adults?
Well, because in this particular issue, what we tried to do was, the issue was related to race, and we were trying to find a person who could represent it from a historical perspective of that race. And so, you know, that's why we kept-
So it gives you latitude, gives you latitude. Okay, I get it. Now, there's no role for the School Board at all in this policy.
Correct.
So not even to become a member of that committee, is there a reason for that?
No, I think that would be great if the School Board wanted to be on the committee, a School Board member wanted to be on the committee. That was one of the inherent conflicts in the previous policy. One policy, there was no role for the School Board. The next policy gave the School Board basically a-
The final word.
Final word, in terms of an appeal. So when we built the new policy, it stops at my level, and my sole purpose is just to make sure that the policy is written was implemented with fidelity, not that I would overturn a select committee that's been charged to review materials. And I think that's an important distinction. I don't think that I should be, as superintendent, being able to trump, basically, the collective wisdom of our professional staff and the adults and students who are formed.
Yeah, I think that's good. So I don't know how other people, I think the School Board should have some role in this, I think, not the final role, but I would, I would think to have one member of that committee be a School Board member.
I think that would be great.
That we have some stake in it, so that would be my suggestion.
To your first point, Tom, I think we did talk about it, and I think the reason why that teaching staff isn't defined is because of the kind of breadth or scope of the issues. And instead of locking in a certain amount of faculty, there might be some issues where we really want a lot of multidisciplinary input. There are others that are much more finite, much more defined, so we wanted to be able to-
The size of the faculties, so we were thinking if it was challenged at an elementary level, you don't have the same size faculty to draw from.
I think the disadvantage is then you can load the committee with the peers of the person whose book is challenged, you know, so, I mean, you know, so that if it's 10 members and they're teaching staff, and then you have three or four other members, I mean, you've kind of, you know, I think there should be, I think there should be a number, is my, so, I mean, it could be a bigger number, it could be five, you know, but I don't think, I don't think it should just be unlimited and undefined.
What if there was like an up to, you know, so then you would have an upper limit, so you couldn't have like 15, you know what I mean? So maybe it wouldn't say that you'd have to have five for a very maybe limited, you know what I'm saying? So maybe it just should have an upper limit.
Yeah. I mean, that's something, you're going to take it back to the Policy Committee for a second read, right? So you can, otherwise, we're going to be pulling off the magic eight ball to come up with the number.
So, Tom, would it support your intent to say something along the lines of members of the teaching staff not to exceed the total other members of the committee or something? Because I think what you're getting at is sort of a majority predetermined outcome, right?
Not to say to be prejudiced, but I think it could give that appearance, right? So I think that would be fine. I think to have some numbers here as opposed to just be undefined, you know, so I think up to, I think I could go with that.
Okay. So could we, do you want to do it for first read with the understanding that we'll bring it back at a later time for a second read?
Yeah, I'm fine, I'm fine with first, for first read, but if you just take those into consideration. I just want, I just wondered whether then, a line, something like, the decision of the superintendent is final, that's it, right?
Yeah.
Well, it's not final, because then, in the policy, there's an appeal level. So if this particular committee, which then presents it to the superintendent, finds something and the parent doesn't agree, they still have the right to appeal to more kind of judicial bodies. Isn't that correct?
No, it would end, it would end at my level.
Oh, does it? I thought there was an appeal process that they have.
No. It appeals to me, and my role would be simply to make sure that the policy was adhered to properly. And then the issue that Tom raises, just to give you an example, when Suzanne asked Kathy Pierce to form the committee, that committee was very big. It was departing people from across the building, so, you know, she was very careful, Kathy Pierce, to make sure that she had broad representation. The speech, Tom's issue, I think that works, Dan, because the issue that we focused in on was the size of a faculty. So inherently, in math, you might smaller faculties than the high school, so I think that addresses Tom's concern, and allows us to create a size appropriate to the size of the building.
Okay. I have a couple questions. One is clerical, at the bottom of page two and the top of page three, something is munched up in the way it was processed. There's a pagination issue or something, and I think there's a line that got cut out.
Okay, I'll just write that down then. Pagination issue, where, Michael?
Bottom of page two, top of page three.
Got it. Thank you.
I think there's a line.
A line's missing.
Page three, oh, of the policy, not of the P D. And then I think we need to be really clear which policy or policies are being replaced or rewritten. Is it just IJL?
No, it was a whole bunch of policies that just were in conflict with each other related to this issue.
Okay, so I think, are those identified somewhere that I missed?
No, they're not, but we'll bring them in the second read.
Yeah.
So wouldn't we have to delete those policies, actually?
Yeah.
That's probably what we need to do with those, is delete, yeah, delete them.
Thank you for catching that.
Yeah, that's a good. So are you ready to vote on this for first?
No, we need to make, I'll make a motion, I'll make a motion to approve policy IJL for first read.
Moved by Denise, second by Brian. Ready to vote? All in favor? It's approved for first read.
Thank you.
So, that's it, ready for policy? Okay. Manifest Committee did its work, right?
Yeah, Manifest met, we're all set.
Okay. The negotiating team has met, I think, three times since the last meeting. I think we've made good progress. I think there's certain issues of, certain money issues we're still, have to work out. I think we're going to resolve it.
The next meeting is July 8th, and we set it up for probably, well, until we're done. We made really tremendous progress yesterday, but then we had sort of the war of the spreadsheets that we needed to work out, where their spreadsheet and our spreadsheet wasn't matching up in Sue, and their money person met today, and they figured out where the differences were. And so when we meet on the 8th, we'll be working from the same set of data. That will, that will be, that should be conducive to us being able to get to resolution.
And what time is that at?
It's at 12:30. Is that what TimeCath says you could get over?
It's 10:00.
Ninth?
Yes.
Okay. I got it on the ninth, Al, sorry.
Send me an email, somebody.
So that you can-
You were missed. Other committee updates?
The Middle School Design Committee will be meeting again Friday, and as we mentioned earlier, will be meeting with-
The town in the afternoon.
-the town as well. We're second part of the meeting.
Okay. Public comment?
That's why you left me. Hi, I'm Dean Rubin. I just wanted to congratulate the Board and the district on an excellent school year, a wonderful school year, especially Concert at the Musical, it was really wonderful. I want to thank everybody who's retiring or leaving for all their great work. And I'm going to go crawl in a hole, because my daughter just applied for a parking permit.
Get her to share with somebody.
Okay. Other public comment? Future meetings are, as indicated, and we do have one non-public session, which I hope will be brief, but we could have a motion to go into non-public session for a personal matter. Kenny, could you make a motion?
Is it A or C? Is it about compensation?
Yes.
Or is it about reputation? Compensation. So it would be NH State Law, RSA 91-A con 3-2, and it would be a compensation of a public employee. I move we go into non-public with a roll call vote.
Good roll call. Move the sec-
Al's second.
Second by Denise, roll call.
Dan Klein, yes.
Michael Williams, yes.
Kenny Rotner, yes.
Denise Day, yes.
Tom Newkirk, yes.
Al Holland, yes.
Brian Sisneros, yes.
Okay, so.